By the town clerk that we do have a quorum. I will remind everyone, if you have not already done so, please silence your phones. Well, folks, when we were last together, we were discussing Article Nine. And this evening, we're going to start with Article Ten. Revolving funds. Authorization of expenditure limits. Select Board Member Teigen, please. I can't hear you. Your microphone, microphone A?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator. Could I ask that we practice our paper cards here by asking whether we want to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to start the meeting?
Actually, that typically is done in the first segment of the meeting, the first night. Okay, so we don't, we traditionally have not done it the subsequent nights.
Well, can we do it now? Are people in favor of it?
It's, that's not what our practice has been.
Well, it's our meeting. I thought I would, I would take the liberty to ask.
Yes, Article Ten, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, hi, everybody. I'm Select Board Member Teigen. I'll be kicking off the entertainment portion of tonight's event. With Article Ten, revolving funds authorization of expenditure limits. I move the town vote to set the annual expenditure limits for the revolving funds for fiscal year 2026 as shown in Article Ten of the warrant. Okay, I'll go ahead and repeat. I move the town vote to set the annual expenditure limits for the revolving funds for fiscal year 2026 as shown in Article Ten of the warrant.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and the presenter will be Finance Director Jason Little.
Good evening. Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three and a half, requires that expenditure limits be authorized annually for the town's revolving funds that are allowed by town bylaw. A revolving fund is a separate fund entity whereby revenue derived from voluntary programs is credited to a fund outside of the general fund, and expenses are paid from the balance while the fund retains its ending balance across fiscal years. The total expenditure limit of the seven funds that exist in town bylaw is $1,310,000, and this is unchanged from FY '25.
Thank you. May I hear from the Appropriations Committee on Article Ten, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations-
Can you closer to the mic, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article Ten.
Thank you. Any discussion, any debate? Yes.
Yeah, Mr. George, with all due respect, I'm willing to respect the time limits. Can you please give me a limit of time for this so I can, a time limit for this statement?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Okay, three minutes. I wanted to just start with a small, you know, statement, and then I'll talk about the topic. I just want to say, "Of the eternal light into the enthronement of the creative intelligence of man and the liberation of man, in the building of the kingdom of His illustrious Royal Majesty and Associates, from here in Northborough to the ends of the earth and the farthest reaches of the cosmos, indeed a kingdom which will have no end, and where the waters of life, that is, non-entropic free energy-"
Could you stay on subject, please?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a prayer. Just like you make, you make a joke before things, okay? And therefore, we say grace and peace to you, Joanna Sophia, shekinah, glory, glory in the highest, and goodwill towards men, and namin, Jesus Christus, paritunus labratus, hominem, amen. Therefore, so, my issue here with the revolving fund, this comes back to the very relevant issue of interest on loans and where this is coming from. It's a circular fund, okay, but the nature of which, okay, it's not, you know, an equilibrium. Rather, the money is constantly being drained out of because of the insidious nature of usury, okay? And so all this money that we're, this is coming from outside sources, right? We're going to outside banks who don't care about the people, and that's why we talk about the building of a public bank in the matter of Ellen Brown, right? So these four, we don't have to go to these financial forces, they don't have to loot the town. So what happens with these revolving funds is that we get a seed grant, and then all that money, the money does not go to building necessary things. And we're not, we support the building of infrastructure, and that's why we want a public bank to do so. We don't want to cut teachers, we don't cut any of these things. We just want to cut unnecessary administration. We want to increase jobs for the working people of Northborough, okay? But rather, the money that is being paid for is being used to finance more unnecessary specialists, okay, who again, don't have the interest of the town in heart, but rather do their bogus statistical measurements, okay, which they want us to accept, okay? And you have to pay their ludicrous salaries, and then what happens is that taxpayers pay more and more taxes, okay, to fund all these people with high salaries for no reason. They hide behind their expertise and their false education. So this is an example of the insidious nature of usury and what it is, interest on loans, which there's no reason for it to exist. It could be abolished from the universe. So with that being said, I want people to consider the nature of usury and what I'm talking about here, interest on loans, and that the financial sector, the insurance sector, which does nothing for the town, but is just a manipulation of notational values, contributes nothing to the physical economy whatsoever, has no purpose whatsoever. So please consider the idea of His illustrious Royal Majesty and Associates, which comes from the grace of the Holy Spirit, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Could you, for the record, give your name and address, please?
Yes, His illustrious, holy Royal Majesty, Michael A. Leonard and Associates, nine Juniper Road, Northborough, to the farthest reaches of the cosmos and heaven, amen.
Microphone A, please.
Okay, can you hear me? I just have a couple of questions. The 750,000, is it 750 for the fire department? What exactly is that used for?
Primarily, the biggest, largest single expense is debt service or paydowns on principal for the ambulances. Other than that, I think, I believe that the statistic, 60% of the ambulance, the fire department's overtime is charged to the revolving fund and various equipment expenses related to the ambulances.
So, so why is that not accounted for in the fire, if we, if every year we're having 60% of that money going into the budget, why isn't that accounted for in the fire department's budget if we know it's going to happen? And you look at this, you know, no disrespect to the, to the fire department, if you start adding up all these numbers for fire department, and you just subtract it out from the, the public education, I'm not including that, this year, we're like, without health, health benefits and retirement, whatever we're paying to the fire department, they're holding 18% of our budget minus schools. Just the fire department, with that 700, with the 1.15 million, we have 400,000 requested for the, when the, when the grant runs, runs out. We're going to be doing that for the next three years. We have 550 for an ambulance, we have 165 for personal protective equipment. Why isn't that being funded? If they have a revolving fund, why are they not using that revolving fund for the purchases of these things instead of asking them to, us to borrow more money to cover this stuff? It just, I mean, it seems like, whether this is true or not, it seems like the national average for the, for what a town should be using, the fire department, two to three percent of the budget, we're at 18? That's with the fire, the, the-
The revolving fund is used to, to fund the debt service on the ambulances. So the article that's on the warrant this year for, for, to authorize debt to purchase ambulances is planned to be paid for from the revolving fund.
It's, sorry, it's just, it's confusing. My second question, just, you know, I'm going to apologize, because I'm probably going to be talking a lot today, but what is the, what is the $50,000 for animal control? I, I know, you had emailed me earlier. I'm sorry, I didn't say my name. My name's Jake Kruskowski, 24 School Street. But what is the, is that above the 43,196 that's in the line item budget?
No, that's the, that would be the incoming revenue related to dog licenses. So the dog licenses go into the revolving fund, and then the revolving fund is appropriated from as a funding source for the general fund.
Okay, so we're not spending 50,000 plus 43,000 dollars a year on animal control?
No.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Are you adding something new?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief here. See, this is the insidious nature of having all these funds, is eight million different funds, and, you know, it's not transparent where all this money goes, because nobody knows where this money goes and where this money goes, and there's all these funds which are all accruing interest. And we want to see that if this does indeed point to some monies being looted out of the town, looted out for Wall Street interests, and to wonder if there is indeed some form of financial corruption in this town, and that this money is being siphoned off, and to what purpose, and who is being paid and for why? Because of these, there's no transparency whatsoever for the nations, the notions of these, all these funds, there's a million different funds, right? And there's no transparency about where these funds go, and we have to ask the question, why? Why, why are we trusting them when they can't be transparent? And maybe that we do can look at a financial conspiracy, as I know we don't want to consider that, but that might be the, the reality that we must have to face, right? So, so I just want to notion that there needs to be a lack of transparency, and if there's not transparency, it does point indeed to a financial conspiracy, and that's why I-
Any other discussion or debate? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on, for Article Ten. I move the town vote to set the annual expenditure limits for the revolving funds or fiscal, for fiscal year 2026 as shown in Article Ten of the warrant. This is a simple majority vote. You may vote at this time. And if you hadn't, hadn't already done it, if you hadn't pushed your button once to get the clicker started, you should probably vote twice so that your vote will be registered. As everyone voted? Let's look at the results. Article Ten passes by the simple majority required. Article Eleven, please.
Article Eleven, Appropriations Committee Reserve Fund. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $175,000 from free cash to the reserve fund to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures.
Motion has been made and seconded. Once again, our Finance Director, Jason Little.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article provides $175,000 for the Appropriations Committee Reserve Fund, the purpose of which is to be used to make budget transfers to cover extraordinary and unforeseen expenses. If such an expense were to arise, a request could be made to transfer funds from the reserve if it were approved by the Appropriations Committee. This fund has been mostly used to make transfers to cover snow and ice overages at the end of a fiscal year, so as to not carry forward the deficit to be raised in the next year's tax rate. The article is proposed to come from free cash, so there'd be no additional tax impact. Any unused balance remaining in the fund will close at the end of the fiscal year and return to free cash.
Thank you. May I hear from the Appropriations Committee on Article Eleven, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article Eleven.
Thank you. Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $175,000 from the free cash to the reserve fund to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures. This is a majority vote. You may vote now. Have we voted? Let's see the results, please. Article Eleven passes. Let's move to Article Twelve, please.
Article Twelve, Stabilization Fund Contribution. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund to be transferred from free cash, to be available for expenditures in FY 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Little, would you please help us understand this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Annually, within our town's financial policies, they call for the town's free cash to be, to, to be, once it's known, for a free cash plan to be developed. The free cash plan was presented last night during the budget article. One facet of it is maintaining the town's level of reserves, and this article proposes to transfer $200,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund. Both are defined reserves of the town. The benefit of transferring money from free cash to the stabilization fund, it signals to the rating agency, bond rating agencies, that the town's commitment to save and have adequate reserves. The stabilization fund also earns interest at a higher rate, and it retains its own interest relative to the fund balance.
Any discussion or debate on Article Twelve, please?
You know, I'll be brief here. Indeed, Michael A. Leonard, His-
Name, name and address, please.
His illustrious, holy majesty, Michael A. Leonard, Associates, nine Juniper Road, Northborough, Mass, to the farthest reaches of the cosmos and the highest heavens. You know, indeed, that all this, this funds and where they, where they exist, and, you know, that, not only is it not transparent, but you look around and you see that the money, and there is a need to spend money in this town, okay? There's a need, it is a great purchase to buy White Cliffs and infrastructure in the town's interest. But there, there's been no movement to develop any, like, legitimate investments whatsoever in any, rehabilitating all the infrastructure. It all goes to this arbitrary and unnecessary nonsense, okay? Like vinyl siding, or these vehicles that, you know, we don't need, that it might be secure, or the fire station, which quite frankly, and let's be honest, and this was suppressed, okay? It's not a fire station, it is a military operation. That's what it is. It's constructed like a military system, which they put with computers to track and continue to spy on people. Now, if you want, if that's the world you want to live in, like, if you believe in this false sense of security, then so be it. Yes, you do, you do get what you, I guess, you asked for, okay? But rather, that the money could be used to, yes, we agree. And sadly, and last thing I'll say on this, right? Okay, they'll have some teachers come up here, right, and say that, oh, we'll cut this program, we'll cut this program, and we agree with them. They're right, because yes, these financial parasites will cut that program and that program, okay, which don't need to be cut. But their administration and their exorbitant salaries and all, they're not going to cut that. So it's a matter of where you cut the funds. We can increase funds for services, we can increase funds for necessary services and the things that people need, and building infrastructure, and housing. Those are good things, those are things worthy of being spent on. But we can decrease the money for expensive statistical specialists that are just making up a bunch of numbers, which have no validity whatsoever, but on the basis of some notion of professional expertise, which is arbitrary, right? So it's a matter of where we spend the money. We're not against spending money. It's that we shouldn't accrue interest from things that serve this town whatsoever, and we should just think about what we spend the money on. And it should be services and things that help people, of course it is.
Any other discussion or debate? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on, for Article Twelve. Okay, I was just corrected. I have not asked for the recommendations, either from the Select Board or the Appropriations? No, it's just Appropriations, round twelve. Okay, just-
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article Twelve.
Thank you. Okay, now we're voting on Article Twelve. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund for the transfer from free cash to available, to be available for expenditure in FY 2025. Twenty-six, right? Five. I'm having a hard time reading this. Yep, twenty-five. Simple majority. Yes.
To clarify that point, when available funds are being appropriated from, we typically make the notation that they be available in FY '25 or the current fiscal year, so that the transfer can be made prior to the end of the fiscal year, and that's allowable under Mass General Law. We just need to classify that as, clarify, in the motion that it's for the current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Is that clear to everyone? It's a simple majority. You may vote now. If you have not already. I think we have the votes. May we see the results, please? Article Twelve passes by the required majority vote. Article Thirteen.
Okay, Article Thirteen, this is a long one, so bear with me. Establishment of a special purpose stabilization fund for safer grant wages. I move that the town vote to establish a special purpose stabilization fund for the Northborough Fire Department pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, for the purpose of receiving and expending funds related to wages for employees hired under the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response (SAFAR) grant awarded to the Northborough Fire Department. And further, that the town appropriate the sum of $400,000 for transfer into said stabilization fund, with said amount to be transferred from free cash to the stabilization fund, to be transferred from free cash, to be available for expenditure in FY 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Little.
So, so the concept of a special purpose stabilization fund, which is allowed by Chapter Forty, Section Five B, was brought up when the, when the SAFAR grant was being discussed by the, by the fire chief with the Select Board. Through the financial boards and committees, the, the, the concept was when there is going to be wages paid from a grant, and again, eight firefighters would amount to a sizable expense, annual expense. So to plan for the eventual expense coming into the budget in the future of approximately $1.2 million, the concept was to begin saving for that through our financial projections over the summer. We started modeling this in the budget models, and so in practice, we would build the fund over a period of two years, provided that free cash or levy capacity would be available to fund the stabilization fund, and then draw that down for a period of three years. Those, that potential plan in the future is, is not, is not a foregone conclusion. It does not have to play out under those circumstances. And then the purpose of this fund can be changed with a two-thirds vote in the future, so we're not locked into using these funds for the purpose that they're being set aside for. But as mentioned before, just like the general purpose stabilization fund, these funds would retain their own investment income, and generally, we can invest them so that they earn a higher investment return than the general fund.
Thank you. May I hear from the Select Board first, and then the Appropriations Committee?
The Select Board had extensive discussions on this, and in the end, voted two in favor and two opposed, to, in terms of recommendation on this article.
And, Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article Thirteen.
Thank you. Discussion, debate? Microphone A, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. I voted for the other stabilization articles, and I will be voting against this when an urge that the town do so. I don't view the town as needing to be my personal bank account. I feel like I and we, the taxpayers, can do better with our own savings than the town. This is designed because there were eight firefighters hired because of some federal funds that were received that will pay their wages for three years. After that three years expires, we'll have to decide as a town whether we still need 28 firefighters, or 20 that we've been going for, for a while, or 24, or some other number. It seems to me that this, and I don't blame anyone for it, but it's essentially meant to make it so in three years, we don't notice that. So we don't see an increase in the tax in three years, even though the cost is going to increase in three years if we keep the eight firefighters. And I'm not saying whether we should or shouldn't, we just don't know today what we'll need in three years. If we need eight firefighters to stay on staff in three years, then, well, by golly, we'll include it in the budget and we'll pay for it. But I don't think appropriating our money for the next three years so it sits in a bank account is a good idea. I'd rather keep it in my bank account. Thank you.
Over here, please.
I'll just stand on my tippy toes. Susie Sislaka, eight Emerson Road. I just had a couple of questions about this, this fund. I worked in employment law, so while we're putting that money away right now, so the SAFAR grant, is that paying unemployment right now? So if we decide not to hire those firefighters, are, do we have to pay them unemployment if we decide not to keep them in three years? Or are they- Or are they just off in the wind? Not that, I want to say that I'm letting them go, I'm just asking the particulars. Like, are we going to have to pay for them in three years, like unemployment? And how does the grant work?
Well, the grant pays their salary and benefits for the three years. My assumption is if, at the end of the three years, the town does not budget to provide for their salaries, and they are laid off at the end of those, they would be eligible for unemployment. To your point, I think you're bringing this up probably for the reason of, the town is on a pay-as-you-go system with unemployment. Most private employers pay an assessment on payroll taxes to the Unemployment Trust Fund, whereas cities and towns generally pay as they go. So if we're assessed for an unemployment claim, we have to pay that in full till it's paid off. Currently, that's in the neighborhood of $35,000 is the primary, is the maximum benefit. That could change over time, but currently, it's in that neighborhood. So the eight times that would be a potential liability in that time, but that's...
And so when we're putting, when we're, sorry, it's a little difficult. I've done this before where I've tried lowering it, and I've really messed it up, so I'm just going to keep going here. So when we're putting the stabilization funds away, are we considering like the unemployment insurance and all of that? We're putting all of those funds away? And also, are we putting the funds away to take care of like any equipment changes and all of that? Because I know we ran into that snafu too. So we're putting away money for their equipment and any of their needs for that? Can anyone answer that?
It was simply a method to soften the blow in three years for the onboarding the expense.
I think it's a great idea, so we're not hit with it, yeah.
All of the ancillary expenses related to firefighters are not necessarily included in that, so they would have to be budgeted within the general fund budget, as would salaries once they're added. So it was potentially to start saving toward the impact in three years.
So in three years, there'll be an even bigger impact. So is this something where, you know how sometimes we can't vote on things for like two years, we have to take a break?
No, I mean, there are some special funds that you set up that have to be in place for three years, that would be enterprise funds, and I think the CPA is the same provisions, even though the town's had CPA longer than that. But there's no three-year requirement or anything like that. Just take a two-thirds vote to change the purpose of the fund.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Doug Stone, 33 Bert Show Road. And I would like to hear from the two select people that did not approve this article.
Could we all, Doug, my suggestion is that all, if you ask for our individual opinions, that all four of us speak.
Okay. I'd love to hear it too.
Julianne, would you want to start and move down this way?
First of all, I'm glad I have this opportunity to explain my mask. I am going to meet a new grandbaby this week, and I understand, thank you. Okay. And second of all, I want to make it clear that I have the utmost respect for our Fire Department and our Emergency Medicine Services. However, as a select person, I consider my job as a job that we have to look at the big picture. I'd love to have a stabilization fund for the new hires, but let's look at the information. Yesterday, we were warned that we will be facing a Proposition 2.5 override. That will necessitate some serious analysis of our budget and town departments. If we have this fund for the eight new firefighters, the way it is written, it will protect eight people, but what about police, administration, DPW, teachers, et cetera, et cetera? Are we making a promise that we might not be able to keep? Also, to Mr. Jones's comment, $400,000 sitting in a special fund, accruing interest only for that fund, I'm not sure at a time where we're raising taxes if that's the best idea. I'm also told that the fund could be redefined, but did I just hear that that would take a two-thirds majority vote? And that might be, that might prove to be difficult, where tonight, we could just say, let's leave it up to all of us in three years to see where we are with eight new hires, what other staffing issues we might be facing, and do it then. So those are my reasons, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to share my feedback on this. We had extensive conversations about this grant when it was initially proposed last year. And while I recognize, and I'm so thankful for the Fire Department and all their work, it was always told to us that we would never have to worry about federal grants. And this year, we've learned that federal grants are not guaranteed. And when I was making the decision on the stabilization fund, I was thinking about the other departments that may be impacted by grants. And I felt that if we were to do a stabilization fund, I would rather it was for general staff purposes, rather than exclusive for the Fire Department. There's a lot of uncertainty in the future, and it just came down to what would be in the best interest of the overall town. Thank you.
So I was probably planning to get up to microphone A and speak anyway, so I appreciate not having to walk with my squeaky shoes across the linoleum here. You know, I see this, and I voted for this, I'm in support of this. I think it makes financial sense, as does the unanimous vote of the Appropriations Committee. You know, this, to me, is not a want, this is a need. The Fire Department proved the need to the Select Board when the Select Board voted for them to go get this grant. Go throw your hat in the ring and try and go get it. And they did something extraordinary, they got it. There's only a handful of communities in Massachusetts that got this grant. I've spoken to Fire Chiefs in other communities in Massachusetts, who are a mix of jealous, annoyed, and angry that Northborough got it over them. So they proved the need to the Select Board. You know, you can look at their action reports and everything that they do, you know, the reports of their daily reactions and calls, but they proved to the Select Board, the Select Board said, go get the grant, and they got it. What does that mean? That means they proved to the federal government, over all these other communities nationwide, that Northborough needed these eight firefighters. If we just wanted them, we wouldn't have gotten it. We needed them. We need them. They are right now town staff. So they came back after getting it, and the Select Board again said, yes, there is a need, we approve this grant. I guess I just don't understand why if we need them, we wouldn't do something financially responsible to try and work in a significant hit to the town's operating budget. And again, it doesn't mean that these funds can't be changed. It doesn't mean that we don't possibly have hard choices with these firefighters, with other firefighters, with police officers, with DPW, with library, with town office staff. This doesn't negate tough choices down the road, for anybody. It just gives us a financially responsible way to try and afford something that we need in Northborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Cohen, Select Board Chair. I share the opinions, and will extend from the Select Board member to my left, as well as the Appropriations Committee. This was a grant of over $3 million, extremely competitive grant. I've spoken with Fire Chiefs elsewhere that applied and did not get grant this year and prior years. Not a lot of towns do. It's great that we got it because we needed it. We needed eight additional firefighters. We have hired those additional firefighters. This is how we keep them when the grant ends. If we don't put this money aside, we would be faced with a decision of adding $1.2 million for those eight firefighters in the same year. There is no way we'd be able to do that. There's just, voting against this is a decision that we do not want to keep those firefighters, because we just won't be able to do it. This is a smart way of saving up and easing it in so that we can afford to keep them. That's why we're doing this. This is from Free Cash, so this is money we already have, that is not allocated to go anywhere else. So it's not an additional tax levy this year. Additionally, there was a question came up, which I had thought about, which was about unemployment insurance, or unemployment, if we have to lay these off. Obviously, at the end of this three-year process, I can't see how we could pay for them, we will have to lay them off. My honest opinion is we won't have to worry about this. Because if we vote against this tonight, those firefighters know their jobs are unsafe. They will leave, they will find other jobs. While we will still have the grant for the next three years, no one will apply for it, because everyone would know their job would be unsafe. The only smart decision tonight is to say yes, so we can bank this money. Yeah, it needs a two-thirds to change it. Stabilization fund needs a two-thirds to do anything with any stabilization fund. To withdraw money out of the standard stabilization fund, to withdraw out of this one, to change the purpose of a specialization fund requires a two-thirds. That's normal. There's nothing wrong with that at all. Please, consider voting yes on this tonight, so we can keep those firefighters that we need. Thank you.
Lisa Micali, 13 Maple Street.
We can barely hear you.
Some of the assist me of a boringness. Be a rock star, how's that? Can you hear me now? Okay. A rock star, right? Thank you. Lisa Micali, 13 Maple Street. I was on the board when this was being brought to us, and we considered a lot of it. I too want to thank the Fire Department and all the work that they've done, the chief for going after the grant, because it is a lot of work, and it certainly gives us the $3 million to add to our staff. I just feel that, same as we talked about earlier, that we are going to be at Proposition 2.5. And right now, we're creating a new... Yeah. So we're going to have to consider all the money that we spend this year, again, to go to what we're going to have to spend next year. And if we can help to start to bring some of that down, so that next year, we can be a little less close to that Proposition 2.5, I'm all for it. Because I can't go to my Social Security Office and ask for $1,000 this year to take care of the taxes. So when we look at this stabilization Safer article, we have a stabilization fund. We could have increased some of the stabilization fund to help with some of the other things that will be coming down the road. But this singles out one department. And I think all departments are as important to us as well. And I don't understand why it's not a bad precedent to set, that with one department, we're putting extra money aside, and specifically for that department. I think we have to look globally, and I do appreciate the work that's gone into it, and Jason, that you brought this up when we first considered the problem, and I think it was well thought. I just don't think with our finances right now, that it's something we should work with. Thank you.
Over here, please.
Yes, I'll be very brief on this, I'll be about a minute and a half, two minutes. The spirit of the poor cry out for all the wages one has deprived. Indeed, Jehovah is just, and we praise his name for that. The look on Mr. Little's face says everything, as well as the Select Board, how they're down and out. They don't seem to have a conviction in what they're saying. And indeed, when they talk, this is a mechanism of town government, right? I mean, they're going to use platitudes such as safety, we can't afford the firefighters, but how about we have the firefighters be able to afford in this town, right? So what these people do, and these administrative people, such as our Fire Chief, okay? They say it's all about safety for the workers, but they give the workers a little pittance, and then they have behaviors conditioning, and the method, if you don't do this, and this will happen. They'll sell you some sort of fear, and use a bunch of, we need to do this, we need to do this. But see, the people are just getting a little bit, and these people are siphoning off a ton of money. Now, with regards to why we're getting that grant, well, it makes sense if, and the Fire Chief has the audacity, and he's not a firefighter, he's some professional manager or hack, to be honest, right? Okay? He doesn't fight fires with the people, and let's have the firefighters come here, right? The reason we have, the people are very obviously trying to make this a paradise for rich people, who don't care about the town, quite frankly, they're laundering money, of course. And that, the issue is, and I'll conclude on this, that the reason that they're getting the FEMA grants, and they're spending all this equipment, a little money for the firefighters, and God forbid if we don't do that, we'll have to lay them off, and no. But we need all this expensive equipment, all these expensive things. The Fire Chief gets a FEMA grant because, quite frankly, it's probably some security state operation that the Fire Chief is probably getting, and it is a military base, and that's what it is. And these people are paid to save the stuff by the government, and they get funds from the government. And if you people want to trust this stuff, argument it about vericundium, appeal to authority, because the authority said so, I really want you to consider the notion that believe, and when they say that we should come to the meetings, okay, they hold these meetings ex parte. I've said that I want to come to these meetings to discuss these principles. There's no transparency in this town. It's because they want their experts to be there without discussion, and then say, oh, you didn't show up to the discussion. It's saying one thing and doing another. And the look on Mr. Little's face says everything, they have no conviction. But know that the Lord Jesus Christ wants to recapitulate all your souls. It just takes the will to say, we were wrong, and there is a better way, and I proposed a better way. So please, talk to me about this, I want an open sociocratic discussion about this. Nothing against the firefighters, it's these administrative people siphoning off money to the town, and saying it's about safety. That's just excuses, they're just siphoning off money, and that's the truth.
Microphone A, please.
Yeah, Jeff Amberson, 260 Green Street. I guess what I'd like to hear from is perhaps the Fire Chief on this, to get his viewpoint. You know, he's probably the premier expert on this, and we haven't heard from him, if we could do that.
Chief?
Interesting to know, I've been fighting fires since 1978, but I'm not a firefighter, so. Interesting comment. Several statements I did here tonight, I just want to make sure that people understand, there's some comment about it's going to cost us a lot more after three years for equipment. Equipment's already been bought, we have all their equipment, we have the uniforms, it's not going to cost us anymore. The idea that we're saving only for the firefighters, what we're saving for is to lessen the impact on the taxpayers, right? To make it so in, to make it so in three years, you're not taking that large hit. And a statement was made that if we don't support this, the firefighters will start to leave. Now, I can tell you, I've never been one, and I will not be one to throw crises on the table. You can ask anyone, any of these board members, anyone, I have never done that, nor will I ever do that. But the fact is, they're right, the people will leave, they'll look for stable jobs. It's not because they don't want to be here. Excuse me, sir. Please let me speak.
Please, no interruptions.
So they will leave, and we will have trouble filling it, no question about that. Do we need the eight firefighters? No. No, we actually need 16, that would be wonderful. Right now, we're about 40 calls ahead of where we were last year. Just before I came here, I left a working structure of fire where it was a building fire, a brush fire, and a car fire. And I'm going to tell you right now, those extra firefighters that we hired that were on duty, made the difference, and that house is still standing, and the gentleman's staying in it tonight. That's the difference.
Michael Shaka, 120 Maynard Street. So first off, congratulations on getting the grant, it's always fantastic to win a grant, that's great.
A little bit closer to the mic.
Sure. Maybe we're going to increase a little. So first off, congratulations on getting the grant, that's always great to get a grant. The question I have is for you, Chief, just some curiosities. So we're hiring eight additional firefighters. I don't know the mechanics of the department well, so I'm trying to get educated a little bit here. What do we have, three shifts and five people per shift? Is that, or four people?
Four shifts.
Four shifts, and how many? Four shifts, and how many peo...
I guess I'm taller than that.
When I came here nine years ago, we were running four shifts with four firefighters a shift. At that time, the intent was to move up to four shifts with five firefighters a shift, which we did over a period of time. So, right now, we're running four shifts with seven firefighters a shift. We've hired the eight people.
So, the seven, seven firefighters per shift?
Yes.
How does that compare to other towns, per shift for a single station?
It would truly depend on the department you're talking about. Westboro, we're about four less than they run. Southboro, we're about two more than they run, and we run about 1,000, a little bit more than 1,000 calls, more than Southboro does.
Okay. And so, the $400,000, does that equate to the payroll for the eight firefighters at their current...
I can't speak, I didn't come up with the $400,000. I'd have to let Mr. Little speak to that.
Sure. Mr. Little?
The design of this $400,000 was one-third of the $1.2 million that we've estimated that the impact would be for employing eight firefighters.
The annualized cost would be 1.2 million for eight FTE, and is that the FTE equivalent of eight at their current rank, or their current tenure level?
Yes.
So, in three years, what's the expected expenditure based on three years of service?
It would be, it would be similar. I mean, it's...
They don't get raises, it's flat?
Well, they do, but yeah, it's, it would be similar. We don't know what rate they were starting, so it was, it was an estimate. It was, it was an intent to come up with an estimate that we could build up the fund over two years, and then it would be drawn down over three to soften the impact of the tax. So, we would know closer to the year that we would actually have to budget for, what the actual salaries were going to be. So, it was meant to be a funding source for those salaries.
Okay. And what is the impact? Earlier, we talked about the, one of the prior warrants was with regard to overtime and the cost of overtime. By hiring these eight additional bodies, is that impacting the overtime? Are we able to have less overtime hours?
So, one of the reasons we went with eight people is because by, with having seven a shift, we can actually drop one now without filling it.
Okay.
So, that will save us overtime by having to drop one.
So, we'd be able to eliminate that overtime, so there's a rebalancing of that?
For one person, we drop one person, and we'd fill the next one.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, I thank you for the information on the staffing, because I don't have a big opinion on that or knowledge of it, so just curiosity. What I do have an opinion on, though, is that yesterday, we saw that, and we've discussed it, that we're going to be experiencing a 10% increase to our taxes. So, while I think it's great we got the grant, I think it's great these guys are going to be here for three years, I agree with, I think it was the first speaker that said, I'm sorry, but I don't think this is the time for us to pay for something in anticipation of softening a blow later. If that blow is going to come in three years, then let's take the blow then. You know, there's an old saying, what's the best way to boil a frog? Slowly, okay? And that's, you know, if you draw the connection there, maybe probably nobody does, and I'm just crazy, but the point is, is that we are the frogs, the taxpayer, and if you slowly boil us by taxing us ahead of time, and then you slowly boil us by taking those monies ahead of time and subsidize future years, and you soften that blow, that's disingenuous. If we're going to take the hit, then let's take the hit when it's time to take the hit, not when we're taking a 10% increase in taxes. So, thanks for the grant, that's wonderful.
Sir, sir, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Thank you. Fran Baxter, 76 Cedar Hill Road. So, I don't believe it's 10% this year, but I do want to say that I agree with Select Board members Tejin and Cohen, that this is the fiscally responsible way of just moving money that we already have in-house into a different bank account that is dedicated to hopefully protect these positions. And while we are not, we are considering them special now, maybe next time it'll be somebody else. But my good friend who I'm sitting with, who is a librarian, assured me that if I have to dial 911, I don't want a librarian coming to my house, unless I want a book on how to exit the house. I want a firefighter. I want a first responder. I had the privilege of being the liaison on the Select Board with our former fire chief, and when asked about the budget process and how many staff he needed, he said that his approach to the budget or to the conversation with the community was, what is your expectation for response time for an emergency? And if you're satisfied with five minutes, I will staff for five minutes. If you want three and a half minutes, I will try to staff for three and a half minutes. And I don't think there's anyone in this room that wants to gamble on the response time that would be lost or lengthened in absence of these eight additional firefighters. That's why the federal government said that we were eligible for the grant, and that's why we should do everything we can to protect these positions moving forward. I think it's interesting, the analogy about the frog. To me, putting the $400,000 into this stabilization fund is the frog. It's slowly going to raise to the 1.2 million that we're going to need in three years if we're going to be able to keep these people. Thank you.
Microphone B, please.
Susie Sislicca, 8 Emerson Road. It's a little lower now, I'm just gonna, I'm still not touching it. I feel like we have other positions and programs in town that are funded by grants right now, and I just, I just want to point out that there's no stabilization funds for them, and they're in the partnership of the, I believe they are in the Greater Boroughs Partnership for Health and Encompass. We don't have a stabilization fund for them. I'm not sure if there's any in the school district. I know there were a couple positions in the school district that were also grant-funded, and we're not considering that. I was, I do have a question, because I thought when I was at the Select Board meeting with the appropriation, with the appropriations committee, I didn't think that you guys were not, like, that you were all together on this. I thought that you were pushing back on this, and I can't remember if it was Terry or George that you were arguing that you didn't think that this was a good idea at the time. You had your back to the audience, I was like the only, Fran and I were the only people in the audience that night for the Select Board meeting, and I thought you guys didn't think that this was a good idea, because we were heading towards a prop, you know, that we were headed towards financial trouble, and you really didn't think that this was a good idea, and I wondered what changed your mind. Do you guys remember? Can I ask that question? I don't even know if it's legally or technically possible to ask the question, but...
Are you directing your question to the Financial Planning Committee?
Oh, yeah, maybe.
Or the Appropriations Committee?
I'm not sure.
Well, then, we can't help you.
In the middle. Appropriations, yeah.
You want appropriations?
In the course of our discussions regarding this article, there was a lot of back and forth regarding this. It's a lot of money, and we are looking at a Proposition Two and a Half override in a good handful of cases, as we look at the numbers for next year. The question is whether or not this actually hurts us from a financial perspective, and after doing a lot of research, and I've done all my numbers relative to what I think fiscal year '27 might look like and '28, this is an appropriate use of funds from free cash. That's not to say you have to do this every single year, but for right now, we're under the two and a half cap. This is coming from free cash. It's not impacting your taxes this year. We need to think about if those firefighters, if public safety is really important, we've heard a lot of people wanting to cut the budget 15%, for example. A $1.2 million increase all at one point in time, that's, that's going to be hard. That's not going to be workable. So, if we're going to keep the firefighters, it's time to make the appropriate reserve for these funds. We look at it again next year, if we need to do another $400,000, and if we can. One of the things about using free cash is when you put it away for specific purposes, it's a much better use of free cash than, A, just letting it sit there, and B, if you end up using free cash instead for, say, operating expenses, you end up into a spike and peaks and valleys, and that's the worst thing that, A, bond companies look at in terms of rating your financial position. It's not good financial management, it's not good fund management. This is an appropriate use of $400,000. And yes, during our discussions, we've looked at, and my colleagues would agree, that I've been one to pontificate, if that's the right word, about the dangers of two and a half overrides, and we don't want to get there. This will not change that equation, and therefore, I think you should support this article, and we should move forward and approve it.
And before any comments are made on the Encompass program and everything, I know, like, you respond in the emergent, and I'm not saying that, and I have utter respect for the fire and safety. I'm very worried about our finances, I'm worried about our schools. They cut as much as they can, and I'm super worried about that, because whatever can't happen in the town, like, that's even less, that's going to go to our schools. Encompass, like, that's starting the problem, that's stopping the problem before it starts. So, all of, what happens in Health and Human Services, like, that's stopping before the problem starts. So, that's where I was worried, okay? So, thank you. And Jason, if you want to...
So, I just wanted to address that comment about the Board of Health grants briefly. The Public Health Excellence Grants, which funds the salaries that are part of the regional approach to public health that we've adopted here through the Boroughs Partnership, that's a long-term grant, so that's not set to expire at the end of any period of time.
Okay.
Encompass, on the other hand, is, I'm blanking on the name of the grant, but it's a federal grant, that's more risky, but it's only funding one person rather than eight people. So, when these grants, those grants predated the Safer Grant, and the principle was put forward that we would begin saving. So, you're making a good argument to begin saving for those public health grants as well through a funding mechanism, but to that point, the Public Health Excellence Grant that funds Boroughs Partnership is, has, has a longer lifespan than three years, which has a definite expiration period.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Kathy DeGraff, 23 Edmonds Way. I just have a question about the Prop Two and a Half override. A couple of folks have referred to that. I'm wondering, how does this interact with that? Is it going to help us avoid it? Is it going to, if we vote for this, is it going to make any difference at all in the future prospect of a Prop Two and a Half override?
Well, it definitely would preserve a part of, some resources that would be available in a future year, so that it would not stop the necessity for an override, like, based on the other needs of all the other town departments and schools.
But for this purpose, we might not need the override for the firefighters, is that...
You may not need as much of an override.
So, my perspective on this is, I was listening to the discussion very avidly, because I couldn't make up my mind. Personally, I want my house protected. I know this summer could bring us very dry weather again, we've had brush fires in the past. I love having eight extra firefighters, it gives me peace of mind, but I'm very fiscally conservative, so, you know, I've been kind of sitting on the fence, but it seems to me, we got really lucky to have $3 million from this grant. It's $3 million we probably would have had to spend, because we would have needed this resource anyway. So, we got a free $3 million, but we should be planning to pick up this expense for ourselves in the future. I'm kind of, I'm leaning towards supporting this, because it feels to me like we needed this resource, we got a big gift in the $3 million, but we would have had to pay for that anyway ourselves. So, we should be starting to plan ahead, so that we're not necessarily going to be hammered in a couple of years from this. So, anyway, that's my perspective. Thank you.
Is this new material that you're presenting?
Yeah, 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 no, it's about this thing. First of all, I was reading the Supreme Court ruling that the Supreme Court on these town meetings wants robust discussion, okay? And that's the case. And so, this town is supposed to value the virtues of education. And granted that perhaps the notion of unable to see things being interconnected, right? How the financial system is connected to the education system, but this notion of just having all these specialist experts in all these places, and saying that something that doesn't follow a robotic pattern of thinking, as in linear A, B, and C, when the universe is not constructed in that way, when everything affects everything else. Now, for, as far as education, I don't usually brag, okay? I had a 3.95 GPA in economics student a year, and I know what I'm talking about, okay? All the mathematical equations projecting what faith we have in math, they're all arbitrary, nonsensical, it's just projecting arbitrary future values. Now, why do people trust Wall Street, the insurance companies, the government? Okay, why do we trust these people, right? Look at what they've done, getting all these bank bailouts, there's no transparency, so what? Are they God? Do we need to have money? But I have an explanation on the money system and how it works. Now, two more points.
Please stay unsubject, you're off-subject.
It is unsubject, thankfully. No, no, yeah.
It has nothing to do with the stabilization funds. Mr. Halloran, a believer in the Catholic Church, who forbids usury, by the way? Mr. Moderator, scope.
I had just said that, okay?
Okay, that's a notion of Aristotelian thinking, your lack of education shows there. Now, secondly, okay, there's...
No, no, no. I won't stand for that, okay?
It's a truth, though, it's a truth.
You can't make statements like that.
Of course I can, because in the United States, we have freedom of speech, you can say whatever.
No, no.
Well, we could debate that in the court.
You're directly insulting another human being.
Her full speech is protective speech, Ms. Cohen said so. I have an email that he said so. I have it. He's, you know, secondly...
Please, please.
Two more things.
Please, please be seated.
Let me save a point, okay?
Please be seated.
Can I, okay, but I'll talk about this on another issue, I'll keep going.
I have a free speech.
Over, microphone A, please.
Thank you. I have two comments. One, have we come to the Commonwealth to ask for any support to get the eight firefighters supported by the Massachusetts general funds coming to the town, right? Second, can I get a move to question to get this thing over with, please, because this is nonsense?
I have someone at the microphone over here. Will you be brief?
Very brief.
Okay?
Yeah, very brief. So, just a couple of points relative to comments that were made from the last time I spoke. I just want to be very clear that this is not about necessity. This isn't, you know, I think it's great that we have these eight new additions, and it's a state grant, I think that's wonderful. It's not about necessity. So, let's not confuse the issue. What, and the other thing is, it was a comment about, well, you know, it's going to be free cash. I talked about free cash yesterday, and that's a shell game, okay? It's not free, there's nothing free about free cash. That's money that we as taxpayers paid last year, it was a surplus, and it's being spent this year. And we're taking this, and we're making this shell game even, even more complex, where we're stealing from last year, which essentially, because we didn't return it to the taxpayer, we're taking that, and then we're putting it forward to offset future costs, while everybody in this room is going to be paying 10% more, and they don't have to pay 10% more. That could take a, I don't know what, I'm not a math whiz, was it 1%? So, 1% of that 10%, maybe 9% now we're at? So, that's, we're talking about money there. So, I just strongly disagree with this article.
So, there is a motion on the floor to move the question. The motion was seconded. I have double-checked with the Select Board and the Appropriations Committee on their opinion on Article 13. So, this is what we're voting on. I move that the town vote to establish a special-purpose stabilization fund.
Moving the question. Now, I'm confused.
And it looks like the voting is complete. May we see the results, please? I declare that the motion to move the question passes by the necessary two-thirds vote. Now, we are voting on the Article 13. Thank you. I move the town vote to establish a special-purpose stabilization fund for the Northborough Fire Department. Per... the Northborough Fire Department pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, for the purpose of receiving and expending funds related to wages for employees hired under the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant awarded to Northborough Fire Department, and further, that the town appropriate the sum of $400,000 for transfer into the stabilization fund, with said amount to be transferred from free cash to the stabilization fund, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025. This is a simple majority vote? Let's... Okay. Yes, it's two-thirds, okay? Let's vote, if you haven't already. Article 13 failed to meet the two-thirds majority level, so Article 13 does not pass. I can't see if you're yelling. Please stand up. Okay.
Just a question. Up above, it says, "Simple majority."
That was a mistake. That was an error. Okay? It is a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Like to move to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider Article 13 has been made and seconded. Is there a specific reason for reconsideration? Is there new information?
Just want to lock in the vote.
We had some practice with reconsideration last night, so I hope that everyone remembers that. Reconsidering is done to make sure that no one, at any time for the duration of this particular town meeting, can bring this particular article back up. And as a result, tonight's vote will stand. It's counterintuitive, because if you say no to reconsideration, that means that the whole process of reconsideration is down, gone, and it's locked in. If you say yes to reconsideration, then the possibility down the road is there to bring this back up again. Is that clear? Okay. So we are voting on the reconsideration, and I can confirm it is a two-thirds vote. Although, no, I'm sorry, start to use the cards. Please use your clickers right now and vote. So the motion to reconsider has failed. It failed to meet the required two-thirds So we're moving on to Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to increase the maximum qualifying gross receipts limit for seniors, persons 65 years of age or older, in the prior calendar year, from $69,000 to $72,000, for the purpose of eligibility to defer property taxes under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, and further, to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22I, authorizing an annual increase in the amount of exemption granted under Clauses 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22E, and 22F of said sections by the previous percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index, CPI, for the previous year, as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2025.
The motion has been made and seconded.
I'll briefly summarize, then ask our Finance Director to provide a little bit more detail. As we did the last couple of years, we are increasing the maximum option for senior tax deferrals, discounts essentially, as determined by state law. Every year, that amount increases, and I hope every year, until we're allowed to just automatically align with the maximum, we will be coming forward and asking for that increase. It's a good law. Second, we're adding an additional options, that is particularly for veterans, and Jason will be able to describe that in a little bit more detail.
Mr. Little.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, the town seeks to adopt all the options for senior tax relief that are allowed by Mass. General Law. In order us to provide an exemption to property taxes, the exemption has to be enshrined in Mass. General Law, so we review new legislation as it's released. And when we see something that may help a senior, or a veteran, or somebody that would qualify for one of these exemptions, we seek to put it forward as a local option to be adopted by the town annually. As Mr. Cohen explained, the senior circuit breaker amount is set by the state. It's the maximum income that could be allowed to qualify people for senior tax deferrals under an exemption program. There's also a new option offered by what was called the HERO Act, that was signed into law in August by the governor. It's Clause 22I. 22I would work, coincide with one of the exemptions that possibly is probably going to be more generous for the applicant, but it would work in conjunction with that, so it could possibly provide a benefit to veterans. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. May I hear from the Select Board on Article 14, please?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of this article.
And may I hear from Appropriations on 14?
Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Any discussion, any debate on Article 14? If not, then I will not bore you by reading the entire motion unless someone feels that I should. You feel that I should read the...
I like the voice of yours, so nice to follow.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I move that the town vote to increase the maximum qualifying gross receipts limit for seniors, persons 65 years of age or older, in the prior calendar year, from $69,000 to $72,000, for the purpose of eligibility to defer property taxes under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, and further, to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 221, authorizing an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under Clauses 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22E, and 22F of said section by the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index for the previous year, as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, effective for the exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2025. This is a simple majority vote. Some of you already have voted. The rest of us can It looks like we all have voted. May we see the results, please? Article 14 has passed. Article 15.
Article 15, Police Supplemental Funding for Body-Worn Cameras and Cloud Storage. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $65,000 for the purchase of body-worn cameras and cloud storage for the police department, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025.
Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by our Police Chief, Brian Griffin.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Griffin. I'm your Police Chief. Article 15, Body-Worn Cameras. Body-worn cameras have become a standard piece of equipment issued to police officers throughout the country today. Locally, the majority of our nearby neighbors, including Westborough, Southborough, Grafton, Shrewsbury, Boylston, and Hudson, have equipped their officers with body-worn cameras. Body-worn cameras promote officer safety, transparency, evidence documentation, and training. There's wants and needs, and I understand that. I wouldn't be up here if this was just a want. I believe this is a need. I have 24 officers on the police department, and that includes myself. There are times when I only have two officers working a shift. I need to protect my officers with this technology. We've received a $48,000 state grant to help support this program, to help cover the cost of the equipment and the storage. We are asking for $65,000 tonight to fully fund the program. We thank you for consideration on this article.
Thank you. May I hear from Appropriations on Article 15?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations voted in the majority to recommend approval of this article.
And may I hear from Financial Planning, please?
Mr. Moderator. Financial Planning Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this Article 15.
Thank you. We have discussion, debate. I'm going to start with microphone A, please.
Mr. Moderator, Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. I 100% am in favor of this resource for our town. I don't like spending money on a lot of things, as you can tell. I 100% this is something we need. It protects the police officers, which is good. It also protects us, which is good. There's really no downside. And I would be hopeful that once we pass this, robust policies can be prepared to make sure that everything's, that they're on when they should be on, and those sorts of things. But thank you for bringing this, and I fully support it. I hope we can get it done.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Yeah, hi. Amanda Jabo, 80 Little Pond Road. I just have a quick question. You said two officers are on duty at a time. Why do we need 25 cameras?
So I have 24 officers sworn, including myself. Each camera will be issued to every sworn officer. Those who are in uniform, who will be working your typical cruiser shift, will be wearing them. The extra one, that 25th, would be for hopefully someday getting an additional staff or two, which would be great, or if one of the cameras get down. But each camera is assigned to an individual officer, like their firearms and their tasers.
Does it have to be, or that's just the way that you want to do it?
That, it makes it, does it have to be? Probably not. It just makes more sense. And where we can assign the officer the camera, he or she's in charge of that camera, like their firearm, like their handcuffs, like their taser, and they're responsible for it. It's programmed for them. It has their call sign programmed into it. It just, it makes it flow a lot better.
Okay. And just one more question. Has there been a need in the past, based on any incidents, where you would have needed this camera in our town? Like, has something come up where it's like, we needed the footage from a camera, and we didn't have it?
Every day?
No, just...
No, that's my answer. Every day. And I'm not being sarcastic. Every day. And it's just that the local newspaper, which doesn't really, you know, cover our area so much anymore, is not going to tell you the story. What you see in the police log only gives you snippets of what we do. In 2023, in December, I know that was a year and a half ago, I had two officers working a midnight shift. The officer stopped a drunk driver at 2:00 in the morning right by Little Pond Road and Route 20. The gentleman was under the influence of alcohol, narcotics, and potentially steroids. The officer who stopped him was the largest officer I have. Gentle giant, but a big officer. The gentleman did not want to go to jail that night, and challenged my officer. He stepped out of his car, and a fight took place in the middle of Route 20 at 2:00 in the morning. We had a sergeant who was working, that was the second officer, respond, as well as mutual aid from Marlborough and Westborough. During the struggle, my two officers, Northborough officers, that one large officer was pushed back into the roadway and was struck by a tractor-trailer truck. Fortunately, he was fine. He's a big guy. This all happened at 2:00 in the morning, and they alerted me the next morning about it. But this is just what, one instance, because you asked of, one instance of what happened to one of my officers. We needed video documentation in that case, so that the suspect would get what was deserved over in the court. The court system is asking for video evidence now. Again, we're the only town without the cameras right now, so we go to Westborough District Court, and all the towns that go there have that evidence to provide the DA's office. To Mr. Jacob's point, I totally agree, that not only are these cameras for our protection, but it's for everyone's protection. But, yeah, it is needed, and there are more cases like that, but we're already on night two, so, okay. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Over here, microphone A.
Thank you. Carter Brandon, 22 Sherlin Drive. I fully support the article. I just had a question, that it's not only the body cameras and also cloud storage. Is that something that's a one-time expense, or is it an... Is that something that's a one-time expense, or is it an annual expense?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we'll, it's a, it's a five-year plan. So with the money that we're, hopefully, we receive this money, again, we've almost received half of it in a state grant, that'll pay for everything for the first five years. That's the equipment. The, a lot of the providers, and there's, there's only a few companies out there that actually sell the actual camera. Who we go with will replace those for free. That's part of the plan after three years. So we'll get all new cameras at no cost after three years. And then the storage will have to incorporate that into our budget after the five-year period. Right now, the storage is about twenty thousand dollars a year. That's right now. In a few years, obviously, it'll be a little more.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hearing no more discussion or debate, we are ready to vote on Article fifteen. The motion is, I move the town, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of sixty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of body-worn cameras and cloud storage for the police department to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY two thousand twenty-five. This is a simple majority vote, and we may vote at this time. And let's see the results, please.
Thank you very much.
Article, Article fifteen passes by the majority vote. Article sixteen.
Article sixteen, Police Cruiser Replacements. I move that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for the use of the police department for the purchase of two new police vehicles to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
So at the police department, we do have a police cruiser replacement schedule that is planned ten years out. We come before a town meeting every year, and we either ask for two or three police vehicles to replace other vehicles. The older vehicles do get traded back in to the dealership for minimal cost, just because they have seen a lot of wear and tear. We maintain them very well, but they still get a lot of wear and tear on those engines. Last year, I came before all of you, and you graciously supported us in this, and I asked for two police vehicles. So you would think I'd be asking for three, because that's kind of how our schedule has always worked, two, three, two, three. After meeting with appropriations and finance committees during the budget process, we talked about this a little bit. And I think it's okay to readjust a schedule if it makes sense, given the financial situation in our community and in our country. So we did talk about it, and they asked me, would you be okay if you were only to get two? And I said, yes, I think we can do that. So I'm here to ask for two police vehicles. I think it's important that we still maintain a schedule, though, because if we don't, we're just going to stack up our cruisers. And then at one point in three or four years, I'll be asking you for five or six cruisers. Our fleet is in really good shape right now. In the past, I told you, and last year I told you, we would typically replace our cars every four to five years or a hundred thousand miles. And again, I'm rethinking this a little bit. I'm sharpening my pencil, going to the drawing board, and I think we can realistically get five years to six years on our vehicles. We take out a premium warranty on our Ford products. In the next couple of years, we'll be phasing out our Chevy Tahos in favor of Ford, and that's more or less because of the warranty. And we do spend the extra money for the warranty, but it has paid off. And that's why I think we can go just a little bit longer on these vehicles. So you will see mostly Fords. Some of our administrative vehicles, still maybe Chevy or Dodge, but the plan is to, the vehicle you see behind us are the ones you're going to, for the most part, see out on the road. These vehicles are driven anywhere from eight to sixteen hours a day, and it's critical we have well-equipped, well-running vehicles to respond to emergency calls. If the funding is approved tonight, one of the, one of the vehicles, which this is a police Ford Interceptor, would be a hybrid if they're available. They have been hard to come by a little bit, and if it's not available, I would go with a gas model. But the plan would be to at least get one of them to be hybrid. We currently have four hybrids right now, and the officers do like driving them. Again, looking for your support, and thank you for consideration on this article.
Thank you. May I hear from appropriations on Article sixteen, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend support of Article sixteen.
Thank you. And may I hear from financial planning, please?
Mr. Moderator, Financial Planning Committee unanimously recommend approval of this Article sixteen.
Thank you. I didn't notice who got up first, so I'm going to go with A.
Go ahead.
Jake Kriskowski, twenty-four School Street. First, I want to thank you for adjusting the schedule. We are, we're going to get hammered with the, the tax, tax increases. It's going to kill us. So I really do appreciate that. I, I support this. I, I emailed with Jason earlier, and he, I was curious. I'm like, how much revenue are we getting for traffic violations, which is about sixty thousand dollars a year? So basically, one car is getting paid for by, by the bad driving of other people. If you want to double that, I encourage you to stop, to just park at my school in Summer Street, because I sit on my porch, and every other car just drives right through. You could make a lot of money to, to fund the whole thing. The one thing that I'm asking, and I'm going to repeat this on the next several items, is that we're asking for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We know, everyone knows that there's no car in the world that is an exact price. I wish there was a little more transparency, and this is, you know, I'm not, this is, this is in general comment. Like, you know, you, you look it up, MSRP forty-seven, one sixty-five for a Ford Police Interceptor One. I'm sure there's some bells and whistles that you add to that. But it would be nice if, if our departments were coming with exact figures, because what happens is this money just goes into the free cash for next year, and then, then we have these discussions like, oh, there's this free cash. And I'm, I'm of the group that is saying, it's not free cash. It's my cash that you're just, you didn't spend last year. I would like to see that money returned to us or offsetting that Prop two and a half so that we could get into a system where we're more, you know, trying to abide by the two and a half, not just constantly like, you know, warning, override, override. But you guys are doing a fantastic job, and I appreciate it. I'm voting for this article. I would just ask, like, maybe in the future, if we can start trying to get a better ballpark so we're not having so much extra free cash. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, and I'd be happy to share that information with you, and you have it. Yeah, you're right about the base prices around the forty-seven five, right around there, what we call an outfit. Upfit is, you know, everything from all the electronics, the sirens, the lights, the computers, the radar detectors. That's, brings it up about twenty thousand dollars or so. And that's standard, right? That's a state contract bid. So I have talked to my neighboring towns, and that's pretty much, we're all pretty much on the same page as to what we're paying for the cars. But yeah, they're certainly, they're not cheap, and I do recognize that. And I just, and your, your comment was funny about the tickets and buying a car with tickets. You know, I, I understand that, but I don't have my officers do that. We're out there to educate the motorists and to enforce the laws. We're not trying to raise money by stopping cars.
Microphone B, please.
Yes. Well, you know, I would like to thank the police department and this stuff. The police department does do a great job. You know, I will give credit. That is not in a financial sense, of course, where it is due. However, I don't think the, this is once again an example of a facsimile of a, like, in the capitalist system, everything's based on image, right? And that this is not necessary to spend a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Okay. I want to know, Brian, do you think that when the police department had just a few cars, and the older cars from a substantial standpoint are much better than newer cars? The newer cars are nothing but bells and whistles with all these unnecessary technological advancements. But as far as, you know, the necessary of the police department, thank you for fighting crime, real crimes, not petty nuisances, right, determined by some middle-class prejudices, right? That, the, that are these cars necessary for the police department to ensure the safety, that is the true safety of the people, not, and secondly, I want to see if these technological upgrades, that we're going to have to pay for storage for all these facilities, and then more money is being spent on all these unnecessary vehicles, which are bad vehicles, by the way, that might have all these spying and, the belief in all these computer mechanisms and the worship of such, and the belief that the computer can't tell us that are the right. I think that's what these things have to do. Like he said, that we could get a forty thousand dollar vehicle is probably just as good of a vehicle. But I think that the computer systems are designed to defer responsibility. In fact, perhaps we've all become computers. We just trust what the computer says, right? Because that makes our job easier, and it doesn't allow us to take responsibility. But yeah, look at what we're paying for, more shiny new vehicles that we're going to have to store, and we don't pay money for the things that are needed, building housing for people. We have the, we have the labor and the resources to do so, you know. But the real economy is not, okay, money. Money is an illusion. We have labor, and we have resources. We can do everything ourselves. We just have to change our thinking with regards to an eco-arette, not an economic, an eco-arette paradigm to do so. But this is a notion of why a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars? The old cars are more reliable. And Brian, just answer the question. Do you need these cars, all these supercars to, you know, real, to keep the people safe? Yes or no?
Yes. I, I...
Instead of like a forty thousand dollar car?
Yeah, I, I agree. I wish it was cheaper, Mike. It's, it's, you, you will, you might be happy to know, I actually did, I was test-driving a electric Chevy Blazer today for, you know, it's always good to think about the future a little bit, and I'm not opposed to electric. They're just not quite there yet for police vehicles. But, you know, I, I do look at costs. I do appreciate that. But that is kind of the, the going rate on the state contract.
Put our money in building car companies in Northboro and stocking cheap crap overseas. That's my...
Microphone B, please.
Mike Schakel, one twenty, Maynard Street. So, so chief, I'm going to surprise everyone in the room here. I'm, I'm going to thank you for your prudence, and, and I really want to thank you and, and point out the, you know, the financial stewardship that you've exemplified tonight by, you know, recognizing the burden on the taxpayers and being responsible, and, and I fully support this warrant. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hearing no more discussion or debate, we are prepared to vote on Article sixteen. Article sixteen says, I move the town vote, the town appropriate the sum of one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for the use of the police department for the purchase of two new police vehicles to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY two thousand twenty-five. This is a majority vote, and we can vote now. It looks like the voting has been completed. Let's see the results. Article sixteen passes by the required majority vote.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Article seventeen, please.
Article seventeen, Fire Ambulance Replacement. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred fifty thousand dollars for the use of the fire department for the purchase of one new ambulance, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of five hundred fifty thousand dollars shall be raised by borrowing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section seven dash one, or any other enabling authority, and the treasurer, with the approval of the select, Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, be authorized to issue bonds or notes therefore.
Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by Chief Parentin, our fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a, our regularly scheduled ambulance replacement, but it hasn't been a regular couple of years. This past year, past year and a half, two years, we had two ambulances that we had blown engines on. So we ended up having to borrow an ambulance from a neighboring department. And we ended up buying an ambulance, a used ambulance, from Westboro. It's a twenty thirteen. So with concerns of how long it's been taking us to get new, new apparatus, and there's, the delays have been incredible, and the price keeps going up, I spoke with the financial director, and I spoke with the then-town administrator, and I proposed that we enter into a contract for a new ambulance, but it would be contingent on passing this meeting. And the reason I did that were two-fold. Number one was to lock in the price, and number two to get us into, into the queue. So we did that, and we locked in the price, and we expect delivery in eight hundred and seventy-five days.
What?
Yeah. And that's going to be replaced in our twenty thirteen, which was a used ambulance that Westboro was getting rid of. So five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the gentleman that got up and was saying, well, how much are the trucks actually, this truck was actually about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but then we have to buy life packs, which are about thirty thousand dollars, and then we have to buy Lucas machines, which are the ones that do the chest compressions, which are about twenty thousand dollars, and then we have to buy radios. So it all adds up. And we've been fortunate that I can tell you that every apparatus we've bought since I've been here, and I know people say, well, you know, why don't you ask for what you need? Because we don't always know what's going to happen sometimes, right? So if I can turn back money, I do. However, I try to ask for the amounts that I need. So we would appreciate your support on this. Thank
May I hear from appropriations on Article seventeen, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the Article seventeen.
And from financial planning, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee unanimously recommends approval of this Article seventeen.
Thank you. Any discussion, any debate?
Just posing a quick question, you know. I'd like to think that this increase of fires, okay, all around in buildings that are supposedly unfireproof, like, of course, the nine eleven Trade Towers, right? Okay, might not be, but might have been deliberately done in order to justify the increases of more spending for more vehicles, just like the fraud of the insurance frauds in California. I'm almost done.
No, no, but you're way out of bounds. You're way out of bounds.
It's the truth.
Sorry. It's true. There's disparities. Just a minute.
You are true.
Well, no, actually, there's research.
Any other discussion or debate? Hearing none. This is, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred fifty thousand dollars for the use of the fire department for the purchase of one new ambulance, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of five hundred fifty thousand dollars shall be raised by borrowing pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to issue bonds or notes therefore. This is a two-thirds vote. Okay? If you give us a second, we'll Okay. So once again, this is a two-thirds vote. You may vote now. It looks like the voting has stopped. Let's see the results, please. I declare that Article seventeen has passed by the required two-thirds vote. I declare that Article seventeen has passed by the required two-thirds vote.
Article eighteen, personal protective equipment. I move that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of providing new personal protective equipment, PPE, for personnel of the Fire Department to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY twenty twenty-five.
Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by our Fire Chief.
Thank you for the support on the, on the ambulance. So, this article was driven, and you've heard us talk about safer tonight, when we got the safer grant, we approached the Select Board, and we asked for new gear that was PFAS-free, you've probably heard PFAS thrown around out there a ton, turns out that they put a lot of PFAS in firefighter gear, and turns out that that's why we all keep getting cancer. So the, the new gear is PFAS-free, and a couple of the Select Board members said, well, they supported this, they really supported one of us all to have new gear, and that's what drove this, this, this request. But like we do with all things that we ask for, we always look, are there other ways to fund this? Is there a grant? Is there a donation? Do we have a benefactor that will take care of this? Is there other ways to do it? Can we fund it through our current budget? And as I was presenting to the, to the boards, and that was one of the questions, can we fund it through the current budget? Well, we do have a plan in place, we always do, but we always want to look for that something else. So what we did is, we applied for a grant, and we found out this week, we got it. Now, the grant doesn't cover all the equipment, it covers about eight to ten sets, but the eight, but the eight to ten sets of equipment, and our current plan, in my belief, is enough to get us through this. What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna do something strange for a Fire Chief, I'm gonna ask Select Board Member Tejan to amend his motion to pass over this article.
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion to pass over Article eighteen.
Is there anything that we need to know to understand why it's being passed over?
As I stated, I believe that the, the grant that we got will assist us greatly to move forward for our replacement, and we all know, we're all taxpayers, everybody has that burden, I understand, and we're always looking, I have always said from day one, that my job is, I'm a steward of your money, that's my job, I'm supposed to be careful of what I spend, we don't just go willy-nilly and ask for everything, and, just as, excuse me, sir.
Mr. Moderator, can we stop this, please?
Certainly, no more interruptions, please. I don't, I don't want to have to take the next step.
So, I've always believed, I've said that, I've believed it from day one, and I think if we can take actions, just as a Police Chief, and we talk about this stuff all the time when we have coffee, and it's important for us to do everything we can, and that's exactly what I'm doing, so that, that's why I'm making this recommendation.
Thank you. So we, we had a motion to pass over, I, did I hear a second there?
Second.
There's a second, okay. And the Chief was gracious enough to explain what the process, what the thought process was, as far as what's going on. For passover, it is a, yeah, simple majority vote, and I see there's no discussion based on that, so what we are voting on at this particular time is to pass over Article eighteen. And we can vote now. And the motion to pass over Article eighteen is successful.
Thank you.
Article nineteen.
Sorry, sleeping on my last one here, all right. Article nineteen, DPW Facilities Town Offices HVAC Supplemental. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred seventy thousand dollars for the Town Office HVAC Replacement Project to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, the presentation will be by our DPW Director.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Scott Sharptier, Public Works Director. This request is to fund replacement of our aging HVAC equipment at the Town Hall. The heating and air conditioning systems were designed for a completely different floor plan than what we have today. The result is that we have offices without any heat or air conditioning, and many of those don't have windows either. The only building ventilation we have is through the opening of windows, which does not provide adequate air turnover, and obviously not in the offices that don't have windows or the hallways. The air conditioning units are well beyond their useful life and have begun to fail, actually, our MIS GIS departments failed a few months ago, which is pretty critical considering that's where our server room is. This article actually provides GAAP funding from previously approved town meeting articles. The original request we made to Appropriations was thirty thousand dollars higher than this, after discussing with our design engineers, we were able to reduce that down to four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The prior town meeting articles that were approved for this use were not exercised, we were waiting for the Town Office feasibility study to be completed, to see if we're actually gonna remain in that building. Considering what we have for a fire station, and some school projects coming around the corner, it certainly looks like Town Offices will be in, at sixty-three Main Street for the foreseeable future, that's why I'm before you today.
Thank you. Now I hear from Financial Planning on Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee, by a majority vote, recommends approval of this Article nineteen.
And may I hear from Appropriations, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee recommends approval by a majority vote on Article nineteen.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Michael Shaka, one twenty Main Street, one twenty Mainard Street. Question for you, is the HVAC system that you're planning on putting in, is it mini-splits, or are you planning on doing regular systems, like, you know, condenser systems that we see there? What type of systems are you putting in?
The design right now includes mini-splits.
Okay, so they're mini-splits?
Correct.
And what are the BTU requirements for the building?
I don't have that information.
Okay, so, where are we coming up with the four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in terms of how much tonnage is required, which would be calculated by the BTUs?
So, the current BTUs, and, let me see, we have two hundred and seventy thousand for Unit One, eighty thousand for Unit One B, hundred and eight thousand for Unit Two, hundred and eight thousand for Unit Three, two hundred and seventy for Unit Two B, hundred and eight thousand for Unit Four, hundred and eight thousand for Unit Five, hundred and eight thousand for Unit Six. I'm a civil engineer, we hired Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing Engineering Firm, Haley and Ward, to do this work.
Mm-hmm.
I'm happy to share with their, their engineering analysis on whether roof-mounted units or mini-splits were more preferable, and there's a third version they looked at, which we discounted out due to the cost, it was, had an extremely high electrical load, which would have required a lot of electrical upgrades to the building.
So, so you're looking at having two, four, five, six, eight, eight separate mini-split units?
The current design isn't complete on the mini-splits, but the cost analysis is, and the mini-split system was the more cost-effective.
But it's eight, eight-
I don't have the number of units right now, sir, the design is not complete.
Okay.
We funded, I'm sorry, we funded a preliminary design to get an idea what the cost estimate is gonna be, so I can come before you. I would not want to produce a final design document under the current building code, and then have no construction funding, come back here in five years when the code has changed, and have that design be thrown out, it'd be a waste of funds.
So, what is, I mean, this is a critical and very rudimentary question, what is the tonnage requirement? If you, if you hired a company that came in and did an analysis, they surely would have given you the tonnage-
Yes.
-that's required, so what is, what is the-
I don't, I don't have the report with me, nor the, I have the cost estimate with me-
Okay.
And I just explained to you the BTUs.
Yeah, so the tonnage is really critical, I've, I've had the joy of implementing a number of mini-splits in the past few years at several properties, the cost of doing that, very recently, as recently as a few months ago, was about sixty-six hundred dollars per ton, and then, and I guess a question that I have for you, I don't know, is the town eligible for the mass save rebates?
We are eligible for some rebates, not with the units, but with insulation, I did find the tonnage, it's two twenty-ton units, or systems, so there's two separate systems comprised of these multiple units totaling forty tons.
Okay, so forty, forty tons-
Yep.
So, the sixty-six hundred dollars, I know with, with mass save, and again, it sounds like you're not eligible for it, you get a twenty-five hundred dollar rebate per ton, I have to believe, and I guess I could do a ChatGPT, or someone in the audience can, that as a municipality, surely, you're not at a disadvantage to a resident, I mean, there must be some benefit by, you know, mass save, some kind of a subsidy, I mean, if, if me or anyone in this room can get a mass save subsidy of twenty-five hundred dollars per ton, bringing that cost down to four thousand per ton, I've gotta believe that that's possible, have you looked into that?
We're a green communities town, we have grants through the state, through the Green Communities Program, they do fund a lot of energy efficiency work, including the insulation at Town Hall, we're looking into whether that's a financially viable approach, it's not a one hundred percent grant, similar to mass saves, we're trying to determine if that's the best approach.
Okay, because, I mean, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I didn't do the math, I'm not that quick on doing the math, of how many tons, even at the four thousand dollar rate, but I think we're at about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, somewhere around there.
The total construction cost estimate is one, one point two-two-one-six hundred, and we do have incentives estimated at a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars.
Oh, so there are incentives that were-
Yes, they're not specifically mass, there are other state incentives for municipalities, there's a different program for residents versus municipalities.
Okay, you have reached your timeframe?
Okay, all right, well, I guess the, the final bit is, is that with the future unknown of that building, and with all the costs that we have, and the ten percent tax increase, and this being an exorbitant amount of money in comparison to personal experience that I've had with mini-split systems, I strongly disagree with this, Warren.
Microphone A, please.
This is a tough one, those are, those are in really bad shape, and it's a lot of money. Is this the Selectmen's agreement that this is putting everything to bed, any talk of moving the Town Hall for the next twenty years? Because we know what, the serviceable life of a new system is gonna be fifteen to twenty years for a commercial system. So if we're gonna invest this money, are we done with feasibility studies of moving to White Cliffs, or moving to the, to Four West Main? Can, can we, can somebody speak to that? Because we should not be investing four hundred and seventy thousand dollars if there's even an inkling of chance that somebody wants to turn the old Town Hall, which is the one we currently use, into residential down the road, because it's, it's a good adaptive use for that type of building. So I just want to hear from everyone saying, we're staying in this building, and the four hundred and seventy thousand dollars is reasonable. And I assume there's gonna be a little bit of cost savings with, with a newer system, for utility-wise, not, definitely not enough to offset, you know, the four hundred and seventy thousand, but that'll bring the cost down a little bit over the lifespan of the equipment. I just want a commitment, like saying, we're not moving out of this building, put it to bed now.
Thank you, Mitch Cohen, Select Board Chair, we have not taken a formal vote on answering that question, so I can't, in a, in a formal way, say, yeah, that's what we're gonna do, I can tell you, based on the discussions that we've had, there's not a lot of interest in moving to White Cliffs.
No, no, yeah.
You know, we have, we have articles later on this agenda, and we've already issued and we received responses on an RFP for White Cliffs, that was the only other building that works as a Town Hall within that feasibility, we're trying to find a different use for White Cliffs. We recognize that the cost of moving Town Hall there, I think it was, you know, thirty million a couple of years ago, I don't know what that's gonna be in some number of years, we've got the Peaslee Project as the next big project, we will have to do something with Town Hall, within, you know, assuming that we do stay where we are, in addition to the HVAC, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that's old about that building, if you walk through it, you know that-
Yeah.
So I'm not gonna say, gee, this is the last expense we will ever have-
No, I'm not asking that, I'm just asking for-
But I, I-
Yeah.
Again, we haven't voted on it, so I can't absolutely say, yeah, we're not moving, I can't, I can't visualize a scenario in which we would move to White Cliffs for Town Hall, we know that it doesn't fit in Four West Main.
And just assuming, just assuming a move would ever get proposed, is that like a two-thirds approval from the town, or does the Selectmen have the ability to just unilaterally say, we're up in, you know?
Yeah, that would require a number of town meeting actions, so we would need to start a feasibility or schematic design process, which would be the coming to town meeting and seeking, you know, probably two, three hundred thousand dollars to say, please design the Town Hall in White Cliffs, for example-
Yeah.
And then we would get a price through that process, then we would come back again, and it would certainly be the debt exclusions, would require a two-thirds majority at Town Meeting, plus a ballot question, we don't want to go through that process, you know, the existing building with some changes should work well for a really long period of time.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Microphone B, please.
Ms. Misselli, thirteen Maple Street, hi Scott. I'm very happy to hear that we're probably going to get some heat and some cool at the much-needed Town Hall that exists. My concerns, and I did bring this up at a meeting, was that mini-splits are probably not the best, although maybe less expensive, way to heat and cool this building. It would require the condensers to be on the outside of wherever the mini-split is, which means it would be hanging on the outside of the brick. It's my understanding that this is considered an antique building, and is not allowed to have any items hanging from the building that are not the lights, or the gutters, or what have you, and I don't know, maybe Norm Corbin is here, he might know a little bit about some of the antiquity, features, thank you, senior moment, and so, and I'm concerned of having mini-splits, because if you, if we have winds like we've had in the past year alone, and everything is hanging off these areas, and you have two floors, the safety is a little concerning, but the visual is even more concerning, and I would really, really want to get, you know, the information that says, that is really not allowed at the building before, you know, anything happens, I'm just stating of something that I had been told before. So, I'm all for giving the HVAC system, I am not at all for the mini-splits, thank you.
To respond, I did reach out to the Northborough Historic District Commission, asked them specifically about that, this building is not considered a, and I'm not gonna use the right terminology probably, but a listed historic property, nor is it in that area or considered, but when we talked to the engineers during their conceptual design, we indicated to them, we don't want anything visible from the street, nor from the parking lot, so that essentially leaves the back, where the sewer pump station is, and then the side where, well, where the MIS GIS mini-split went, under kind of an emergency situation. So, we did direct them that those two sides of the building will not have any visible changes or equipment hanging off.
Can they, can the condensers be put on the ground? Do they have to be?
They can be ground-mounted, yes.
And are these, is that the plan, to have them ground-mounted?
We haven't decided on the, it's a site location, we haven't done any survey yet, my hope and my goal is that they're kind of stuck in the back, we don't have to see them, but I, we need to protect them as well.
Well, thank you for looking into that, I just feel that on the ground is still a safer place, you could put some protection around it, and the wind really wouldn't affect it by any means, but if you can create that, I'd really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Jeff Amberson, two sixty Green Street, does this project come under prevailing wage?
Yes, it does.
I think it's important that people understand that, when, you know, you try and compare the cost of this to, you know, a residential project, or even a commercial project, and maybe you could, you could probably explain it better than I do, but it jacks the cost up, you know? up, you know, exponentially, and I think that's important.
I'm happy to explain it a little bit. So we just put out a, a solicitation for bid for municipal signs at our, our, our town buildings. The bid package itself, the specifications and drawings were maybe eight or ten pages, and then those forty-five pages of wage rates from the state. That's a state-mandated law that we pay prevailing wage rates. You look through that rate table, you'll see that a, a carpenter is making over seventy-five dollars an hour, a laborer is in the sixty-eight to seventy-dollar range, and then when you get into some of the more skilled trades, electricians, pipe fitters, glazers, those, those hourly rates are well above eighty dollars an hour. So I have home improvements at my house. If my carpenter who just did my interior doors wanted eighty dollars an hour, I certainly wouldn't have hired him. But we don't have a choice as a municipality, that's the law that we have to follow.
Go ahead.
Hi, Stephanie Yusaf, five Johnson Ave. I, real quick, just want to say that I worked at Town Hall for about ten years, haven't been there in Poly five-six, and I ran programming, et cetera, et cetera, and to put quotes on the word "sick" building. Listen, we needed it back then, and I have no skin in it now, because I only visit there briefly, but if we're not moving, I say, you guys should get your, your new stuff.
Thank you, I was actually, I was actually trying to avoid that, that term, but it is considered a sick building. We don't have adequate air turnover for office space, the recommended air turnover is five to six times per hour. As indicated, we don't have ventilation if the windows are closed.
Mr. Corbin.
Thank you. Norm, Norm Corbin, thirty-five Whitney Street. I'm a hundred percent for this project. And I think now, I think if we start to look at things, I think we need a little common sense here. This building, we're going to be in this building for another twenty years, so we may as well get it prepared to be useful for another twenty years. Relocating it, as, as we've seen from the feasibility study, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And with Peaslee School and other, and the fire, fire station, I just think, let's accept the fact we're here for twenty years and move forward with it. It's going to be, I think that's just the right way to go. Thanks.
Certainly. But what about the person behind you? She can go next, okay?
Susie Sissaka, Emerson Road, again. I'm in the building a lot for meetings and committees and picking stuff up during the day, and it doesn't matter if it's summer, winter, spring, or fall, it will be sweltering, like, you'll go from one floor to another, and I will, I'll go into an office, and I'm like, I am dying. Like, you just feel like you're dying, and you can't breathe, and you feel like you're coming down with something, and you just, you leave, and we'll be having a meeting, and you'll just have to open a window, because you can't see it. I mean, tune, tune into our ZBA meetings, they're very exciting. But I, I sit near, I sit near the window, and you'll see, if you look, the windows are open, because we can't breathe in there, there's no circulation or anything. And these, all of these people, all the staff are in there all day, Monday through Friday. Friday, they have a half-day, and they deserve it, but, because they're there late for our meetings, but they're there all day long. So I, I'm in support of this, because we just, we just invested in a brand-new building for the fire station, and these people are going to be there, and I, I was going to ask about the airflow, so I'm glad you asked about that, the filtration and everything, so full support of this, because I just visit, and it's terrible. I'm sorry, you guys, but I can't breathe, I'm thinking about it, and I'm like choking, but thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Bob Light, forty-eight Emerson Road. I'm the Chair of the Historic District Commission, and I just want to reinforce what Scott said about the restrictions on Town Hall renovation. Because it is not in the historic district, there would be no restrictions to modifying the building that might affect the vision from the street. There would be a demolition delay, because it is a historic building if it were to be just taken down. But in terms of just modifications that affect the outside, there would be no restrictions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make a brief comment with regards to this speech. I mean, this man is supposed to be an expert. When, when Michael asked a question, he said, I don't have the answer to this question, and then he acts again. Now, I don't even know if these people are responsible for their lying, they, they may be a robot that's like just programmed, and they might not be at fault. After all, in the Boolean algebra, okay, one error in the fishbowl causes a massive problem, causes society collapse. Maybe we are just all, you know, robots in a, in a sense, right? And that's, it's because of deductive and inductive reasoning, which is, of course, a conspiracy, right?
Excuse me.
And that's why this goes through all the procedures, right? We can't use common sense. I'm right, I'm right. It's a conspiracy.
Thank you.
Mike Shaka, one-twenty Mayor Street. So, just to be clear, you know, I, I don't contest the necessity of this. I mean, obviously, I've, I've been in the Town Hall many times, and I, I, I can completely understand and agree that the ventilation is poor, and, and, you know, I can see these, these compressors, they're, they're in tough shape. The, the problem that I have is the cost. And, you know, I did the math, I had a chance to, to think about it for a second there, and I, and it came out to a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, and that's without recognizing economies of scale. You know, the, the, the pricing that I've paid for commercial units, it would have come out to about a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, and those are mishebishi, which is the, the cream of the crop. So, you know, I, I, I guess, and I, you know, as far as the future of this building, you know, I'll, I'll let that go, because, you know, if, if, if for some reason there's a decision to move out of this building, then, then we can, you know, those chickens can come home to roost at another time, and we can debate that issue later. So, so again, I don't have a problem with the necessity, I have a problem with the cost. So, you know, the prevailing wage, or I, I forget, what's the term, is that?
That's correct.
Yep. So, so, you know, here's something that always bothers me about that, and, and, and this may come up again a little bit later, too, is that with regard to prevailing wage, what prevents the town from, for example, I'll use that tree example I gave yesterday, about sixty-thousand dollars to cut down twenty trees? Why did we have to pay prevailing wage and contract it out, when we have a tree-cutting machine, and, 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 and we, we have the bodies, and if we don't have a sufficient body, we don't have an arborist, we don't have someone that can cut down the tree, and this is a parallel conversation to this example, is, is, is that we could hire a full-time equivalent for that, and, and they take the two days to cut down the trees, and then we've got three-hundred-and-sixty-three additional days to have that person do something, just like the, the, the police station. We could have hired two licensed carpenters for the year for significantly less. And- As I said, there's a parallel, sir. The parallel is-
Well, you're, you're running out of time, okay?
All right, so, so the parallel is, is that I, I think that prevailing wages is a crock. I think that there's other ways to do it. And, and therefore, Article nineteen, I, I call a motion to amend Article nineteen, a motion to amend Article nineteen by reducing the amount to be-
Could, could I have some quiet, please?
To be two-hundred-thousand dollars, to be raised and appropriated or transferred. So I, I, I hope you, you get it for two-hundred-thousand dollars, and we do it for a fair price, in fairness to the taxpayers.
So the motion's been made and seconded. I, I don't quite understand your motion to amend. You're, you're amending just the bottom line for this, for this article?
The, the, the article is requesting four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, and I'm amending that to two-hundred-thousand dollars. And that's, that's providing a forty-thousand buffer over what I believe to be a fair price, even without recognizing economies of scale.
Yep. I, I'm not arguing with you, but I don't understand why you believe it's a fair price, when, you know-
Because I've installed several of these, quite a few.
The state, as well as our team, our local team, has come up with a number based on what the reality is of doing business as a municipality.
And, and, and that's all well and good, and we can discuss that, you know, the, the, the state and others came up with-
Quiet, please.
The state and others came up with a fair price of sixty-thousand dollars to cut down twenty trees. They came up with a fair price of five-hundred-something-thousand dollars to side a building scarcely larger than a house. I mean, there, there's been-
We're talking about the AC right now.
And, and, exactly, and, and these, these topics are all, the reason why we have a ten percent tax increase for our citizens, because we're not good fiduciaries. We're not spending, we, we are overpaying grossly.
Mr. Moderator, I have a point of order.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I believe, as much as I respect the gentleman making the amendment, I believe the amendment's out of order, because it has to be in writing and signed, and-
Right here.
That hasn't been done, and I would move the question.
Yes. Second. No, the motion's been made. Motion's been made.
Just to clarify, if I can, just to moderate a little bit on the cost.
Yes, please.
So it's not buying eight mini splits, hanging them on the side of the building, plugging them in and, and leaving, there is a lot of duct work improvements that need to be done, strip heaters where the ducts can't get to, there are electrical upgrades for the service so it can accommodate those, there are insulation needs, there's concern with some hazardous material abatement that possibly may be required for the work. The work needs to be phased, I can't shut down Town Hall for three months while the contractor completes the work. So there's a lot of intricacies that don't necessarily apply to, to a residential project. When I replace my heating in my home, I don't do it in the, in the winter. So it, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of other things involved.
Eric Martin, thirty-two Weston Terrace. Mr. Sharpton, here. Say whatever the amendment is, is, you know, the less amount, right? And we are not able, and we come in and we are not able to perform this work. What happens to that money? What happens to Town Hall? I mean, when I did the math, you know, just not knowing prevailing wage at, give me one thing here, six thousand per ton, let's go with six thousand per ton on mini splits, again, not including the, all that work, prevailing wage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, comes out to, just for the equipment and installation, figuring perfect rate, sunny days, two-hundred, you know, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, which is less than this gentleman was proposing. So is this an all-or-nothing thing? If, if we, if we are unable to raise the adequate money, what happens?
We could scale the project back by eliminating some meeting space. Meeting space is not used all day, every day, you know, people don't sit in the meeting space for a lo-
Prouse.
Excuse me?
Point of order, sir.
Meeting space is not occupied for eleven hours a day. All of our meeting rooms have windows, so we could have adequate safe ventilation in the meeting space. We would probably put that in as a bid alternate. There may be an ability to not condition the hallways, let the hallways heat and cool as be, and we can walk down the hallways when they're flaming hot in the summer and cold in the wintertime, and just have safe and, and adequate controls in the, in the, in the office spaces.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more. If, if the money isn't used, this is free cash, it goes back into free cash for reconsideration at a future Town Meeting.
Thank you. As a follow-up to that, you mentioned that the Town Server Room is currently the GIS office where the HVAC has broken. Do you happen to know offhand what the dollar amount of data, financial liability, any other legal ramifications are, and replacement of any of that equipment is?
I, I don't. I know the equipment was just north of fifty-thousand dollars to, to replace for one office and the server room. And it was very unpleasant for the month and a half, two months it took to keep the servers cool.
I, I, as an intern who sat with a, a box fan in front of a server rack in the school department in Worcester in two thousand, I understand, sir. And then also, just if there's, is there any liability for not being able to fulfill any Freedom of Information Act request if we lose any data?
I'm not aware of any issues with freedom. I don't, I'm not a data management guy.
No worries. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
I'll be brief.
Yes.
This is, of course, the problem of believing in a financial economy and not a real physical economy. I also want to point one thing, that, see, the people are complaining that these, God forbid, the heat is a little too hot. What a sense of entitlement when people are dying in Palestine, what a sense of entitlement when people are on the streets, and they could be housed there, and you don't care about it, because they're all a bunch of money-grubbing hypocrites and are going to-
You are out of bounds, thank you.
You have to be quiet, okay?
Thank you. I, I ask again, could you please be quiet? Thank you. Thank you. You are not being quiet. I don't want to take that next step. Officer, may we please have this man removed?
I'll be back soon.
I'll see you then.
I'll see you before, sir. I like to have this debate when you're on the screen. Oh, fuck it, Larry, I'm not going to have freedom of speech, right? You know, there's no laws, the Supreme Court clearly says. Well, Michael's right, let's, let's say, let's, let's say, you know, a logical thing, if Michael's right, what are the consequences there are? If not, if it's a hoax, what are the consequences there are? But it is a hoax. I'm way more healthier than all you guys.
You, thank you. You're all sick, and you trust the doctor, the doctor made more money off of that, now,
please, because if you go back for it, just like those people who are on the internet, just like you trust us, like, I have to make more money for drugs and that, right? You trust them, you trust them, even though, of course, they make the hundred thousand dollars, you know, they make money like they're stupid, they're a hundred dollars a year back there, right? Oh, I respect you so much, but you leave it now.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
It looks like the motions have been in writing, so I withdraw my point, and I withdraw the motion.
Thank you. And I'd like to personally apologize for all of you attendees. Northborough has a long-lasting tradition of having Town Meetings where we come in as a community and we leave as a community. And it pains me greatly that, for some reason recently, these meetings have been scarred. And my responsibility is to try to control those. I will continue to try to do that, but I thank all of you for your stability. Now, I believe where we are now is there was an amendment made to the article, for, for Article nineteen. And the amendment was to move, amend the sum in Article nineteen to two-hundred-thousand dollars from the original four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Okay? This is a, an amendment is a simple majority, so we all know what we're voting for. We may, we may vote now. And it looks like the votes are completed. May we see the results, please? And the amendment does not pass.
Mr. Moderator, I vote to move the question.
Thank you. Moving the question for Article nineteen, the original Article nineteen. And the motion is, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of four-hundred, I'm sorry, four-hundred-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. I stand corrected one more time. There was a motion to move the question, we need to vote on that. We can do a hand vote if you like. Okay? All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion to move the question has passed, by two-thirds. Now we're back to the original Article nineteen. Okay? I will not read the motion again, because I think we all know what that is, four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. And as soon as we get the screen up, we can vote on it. So it looks like the voting is completed, may we see the results, please? So it looks like the voting is completed. May we see the results, please? And Article 19 passes by the required majority vote. Article 20, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $310,000 for roadway improvements as explained in Article 20 in the warrant to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025.
The motion has been made and seconded. Our DPW director is up again. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Julianne. So this article we see every year before you. This will fund a portion of our roadway improvements for this coming calendar year, 2026. These funds will be coupled with $300,000 that we carry in the operating budget for roadway maintenance, as well as approximately $500,000 that we get out of our Chapter 90 state funds for mass DOT. That provides a total roadway maintenance allocation of $1.1 million for calendar 26. During the winter season, this upcoming winter season, we'll reengage our pavement management program and update our capital improvement, pavement program to identify what we're going to do for FY, for calendar 26 paving. We take into a lot of different considerations when we decide what roads get paved and what treatments they have. There's a regionality component, meaning we won't want contractors bouncing all over town. We try to use a variety of treatments, including full reconstruction all the way down to crack seal in order to maintain our roads' integrity for a longer period for a short dollar amount. And our goal every year is to touch approximately 10% of our 80 miles of roadways. Our current pavement condition index, which is like the, the roadway grade, like a school grade, is a 77. It's been hovering in the mid 70s since we started this process in 2016. That's what the $1.1 million gets us. Past years, on occasions, we've had to redirect some of our Chapter 90 money to a drain, emergency drainage repairs. You'll see a future article to discuss that need, but this one tonight is specifically for roadway maintenance. Thank you. Thank you. May I hear from appropriations on Article 20, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 20.
Thank you. And may I hear from Financial Planning, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee unanimously recommends approval of this Article 20.
Thank you. Any discussion, any debate on Article 20? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $310,000 for roadway improvements as explained in Article 20 in the warrant to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 25. This is a majority vote, and we may vote now. And it looks like we have finished the vote. Article 20 passes by the majority required vote. Article 21, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of funding drainage and sidewalk improvements, including but not limited to the repair, replacement, and maintenance of culverts, drainage outfalls, and sidewalks throughout the town, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025.
The motion has been made and seconded. Our DPW director. Thank you. And thank you for your support. I was just mentioning earlier, we've had to redirect Chapter 90 funds to emergency culvert repairs. That is what drove this article to come before you, not just tonight, for the past few years. Actually, the first time we, you approved this article was when the Lincoln Street culvert failed right adjacent to the Lincoln Street Elementary School. And this was the sole source of funding for that repair, which was able to be completed before school started. Thank goodness we had it that year. So this request will provide funding for the repair of town drainage and/or sidewalks. We've experienced several culvert failures in the past half a dozen or so years. Rice Ave, we had one, Davis and Ridge Road, the Lincoln Street culvert I just described to you. And currently, we have two culverts that recently failed. One is on Church Street by Fay Lane, and the other one is on Howard Street, right between the two cemetery entrances. You'll notice where they are by the, by the roadway patches. We're currently in the design phase for cure and place pipelining for those two culverts. This article will support construction or repair of those culverts. And our hope is to put forward some of the funds toward reconstruction of our sidewalks in town. You can see on the slide, we have a lot of drainage infrastructure with zero operating budget allocated toward drainage replacement and substantial repair. All of our drainage repair money, which accounts for very little, goes toward catch basin rebuilds and manhole rebuilds. Thank you. May I hear from the Appropriations Committee on Article 21?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 21.
And may I hear from the Financial Planning Committee?
Mr. Moderator, Financial Planning Committee unanimously recommends approval of this Article 21.
Thank you. Any discussion, any debate on Article 21? Hearing none. This is what we're, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of funding draining, drainage and sidewalk improvements, including but not limited to the repair, replacement, and maintenance of culverts, drainage outfalls, and sidewalks throughout the town, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025. This is a majority vote, and we can vote now. And it looks like we have finished the voting. The results are that Article 21 has passed by the simple majority vote. Article 22, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $360,000 for the purchase of a 20-ton dump truck with spreader and plow to replace the town's existing 2005 model, which has exceeded its serviceable lifespan due to significant structural deterioration. Said funds to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now, before I get into the specifics of this article, we have three articles coming up. Each one is for a vehicle. So I want to give you a little bit of information about what Public Works does with our, our vehicle requests. So we're requesting funding for vehicle replacements. Each one is a direct replacement for an aging vehicle that either currently or soon won't be able to meet the needs of the department. We have 11 large trucks, like the one we're requesting funds for now. We replace one every other year, which means on our replacement schedule, they get replaced every 22 years. We have seven medium-sized trucks. We'll be discussing one of those in a future article. We replace one of those every other year, meaning they get replaced approximately every 14 years. Our smaller trucks get replaced as they're needed, depending on the, the condition of the individual truck, which is driven a lot by what it's, what it's been, what the purposes it's been serving. DPW trucks are very, they're highly customized, very similar to the police vehicle. And you heard the fire chief talk about the lead time for, for an ambulance. The truck that we're discussing now is very similar. For example, last year, we, you guys approved a F-350 purchase for the water and sewer division. That truck is still a few months out. We have yet to receive that. Town meeting approved a similar large Mack truck in 2023. We still have not received that vehicle, and it has yet to be outfitted. The chassis was just completed, and it's currently sitting at the shop waiting for upfitting, which is what the fire chief was talking about, the ambulance. You buy the chassis, you bring it to an upfitting facility, and then they make a conventional truck into a, into an ambulance. Same thing happens with our, our fleet vehicles. So again, this truck, this request is to fund the replacement of a 2005 dump truck. It is similar to the one shown. That is the one that's going to be replaced, and the one we purchased will be very similar. The existing trucks suffer from frame rot, as well as engine blow-by. Engine blow-by results in a progressively, a progressive loss of power. The truck hauls our construction materials, storm debris, and serves for snow removal as well. The useful life of these vehicles is approximately 20 years. As I indicated, we try to get 22 years out of each one of these. The truck we're proposing to replace will be approximately 24 years old by the time its replacement vehicle comes in. So this truck will serve well longer than its useful life, and we're trying to get as many years out of it as we can. The engine is continuously losing power, so that, that truck, I hope, will last two years until we get the replacement. I'm not sure if it's going to. Thank you. Any discussion, debate on Article 20, 22, I'm sorry?
Michael Shaka, 120 Marion Street. So how many smaller trucks do you have? You mentioned there were seven medium and 11 large.
That's correct.
How many small? You, you didn't mention the number of small.
It varies. Right now, we have two.
Two. Is that the extent of the, of the fleet? 11, 7, and 2?
For trucks, yes.
What, what else is part of the fleet?
Well, we have front-end loaders, we have backhoes, skid steers.
Vehicles.
They, well, they have license plates on them, so, yeah. A lot of trailers, they have license plates on them as well.
Okay, okay. All right. And, and the, the staffing is 22 people, including yourself and admin?
Yep.
Is that right? Okay. The large truck, 11 of them, they're all similar, you know, so basically $4 million worth of, of large trucks. And then you've got the, the seven medium. The seven medium are all plow trucks as well?
They all have capacity to plow, and most of them plow. They don't all plow.
Okay. So we've got-
We don't put, I'm sorry, we don't put a plow on our, our hot box truck. A truck that has an asphalt hot box in the back, we're not going to go and plow with that.
Okay. So, so there's, how many trucks with plows then, just to be clear? It's not 18?
They're all outfitted for plowing.
They're all outfitted for plowing, but you don't plow with them?
We prefer not to plow with our asphalt hot box truck. In the event we had another truck or two go down, it's ready to serve.
Okay, all right. And, and it was stated earlier that, I believe, the, the roadway in, in the town of Northboro linear is 92 miles, and if you subtract out the state road, which is Route 9, 290, and Route 20, that brings it down to 80 miles roughly. Is that correct?
We have approximately 80 miles of town over roads.
80 linear miles. So, so we've got 17 plow trucks for 80 linear miles. I don't, I'm not quite sure of the math. I mean, let's just go with the 11 large ones. So we've got one truck for every eight miles of roadway? Now, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I really look at this and, and think that, and by the way, wait a second, I, here's another question. So you don't exclusively do the plowing of, of the town, right? Don't we outsource a, a percentage of the plowing?
Correct. We hire approximately 10 independent plow contractors every year.
So there's 10 independent plow contractors, which that makes up, what percentage of the plowing burden?
We plow in tandem often.
Okay.
So it's not one truck, one mile. We often plow in tandem.
Yeah. So if we're looking at it, though, completely linear, and we're really doing simple math, and we say, you know, let's, let's call it 10 and 10 instead of 11 and 10, we've got 20 miles, 20 trucks for 80 miles. So you're looking at four miles of roadway per large truck and not considering the medium trucks or the small trucks. So I beg the question, are you being as good of a steward and a fiduciary as the police chief exemplified earlier? I, I dare to say no. And I think that, that this is expenditure that goes far beyond. I think that all of the vehicles, frankly, I'm probably going to say the same thing for all of them. I, I think that you have too many vehicles, and I think that you shouldn't be outsourcing as much as you are. And I think that we need to take that burden on ourselves. And if it requires maybe hiring a couple more FTEs, we're going to do it a lot cheaper. And, 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 you know, I, maybe I'm old-fashioned, older, beyond my, my, my hairline. But, but I remember that there was something special about being, you know, in the Northeast. You know, there was, there was frugality, Yankee frugality that we had, and there was prudence that we had. And it was about looking at costs and saying, hey, that's just not common sense. And that's not reasonable. And, and I think there's so much of that in this town that's not reasonable, and that's what I spoke of yesterday. And that's, this is a perfect example of that. So I, I ask that we vote this down.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Oh, you're done. Okay, thank you. Just to, just to be clear, our large trucks, while they are outfitted for, for plows, they don't all plow. The medium-sized truck, the hot, the hot box truck does not plow. We have a bucket truck that has $200,000 worth of tree working equipment that you had referenced earlier. That doesn't plow. I would not want, it, 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 excuse me. It can plow in an emergency, but we choose not to use that. We have a catch basin cleaning truck that's from 1999. We certainly don't plow with that. It can plow. We would put it on the road in the event we were in an emergency, we needed it. But we do have specialized equipment that can plow, will be don't, in order for us to be responsible with what the town has purchased. Having a $200,000 bucket truck on the back of a truck and running that around town in a snowstorm covered in salt, it's not a good, it's not good practice for fleet man, management. Our D, B, please? I'm sorry.
Yes. Hi, Amanda Jabo, 80 Little Pond Road. I have a couple of questions first, and then I have a statement I'd like to make. I'm assuming this dump truck is, that's planned to be purchased, is a new dump truck?
Correct.
Is it brand new?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Has the option been looked into to purchase used equipment? And if so, how much would that cost?
We've looked into purchasing used equipment. It's generally through muni bids, and it's similar to what you would see, what car dealers do. It's, you get to walk around, you look at the truck, and, and you, and you purchase it. Buying a used Mack truck, which matches our fleet, would be, would be a challenge to find one. The community that purchased it is getting rid of it for a reason. I mean, the reason why we're getting rid of this truck is not just the age, it's the frame rot, and it's, and it's the engine failure. That's not, it's not common for the trade-ins to, to be in, in good condition.
Okay. So I'm much in agreement with the gentleman who spoke before me, and I'd like to say this message to my fellow community members. Are you really okay with this? If any household was operating with this level of fiscal responsibility, they'd be bankrupt. Families have to make difficult decisions to balance their budget and live within their means. They might not be able to take that vacation or purchase a new vehicle, and we must hold the town accountable to do the same. We might not get all new vehicles just because it's on a schedule. I think this is very unnecessary. Perhaps purchase a used vehicle or parts. Sacrifices have to be made. It's not fun and what people want to hear, but unfortunately, it's the truth. People are hurting financially. I myself was laid off unexpectedly last year. No jobs are stable. The tax projection graph shown last evening was alarming to me, and our current path is unsustainable. The about 200 of us here tonight are making decisions for our broader community of 15,000, and we cannot take that responsibility lightly. The majority of our neighbors who can't be here tonight are likely taking care of children, are possibly still at work to afford to live in this nice town we are privileged enough to call home. But we simply cannot continue this unsustainable cycle. I will not be voting for any replacement vehicles or any other extraneous spending, and I urge my fellow residents to do the same. Return our free cash to us by paying down debt or utilizing it for something our town truly needs. Thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Hi, Tim Kalin, 42 Davis Street. Just two questions for you. Are you responsible for plowing things other than roads?
Yes, we plow all the school parking lots, all the sidewalks, the municipal parking lots as well.
And that impact, on snow days, that makes kids get into school safe, correct?
Yes. The, the school superintendent, well, the assistant superintendent, myself and my subordinates coordinate in detail on when schools will be open and available. The sidewalks are focused as well around the schools. So, yes.
Okay, and thank you. And what, if, if this truck is not replaced, what is the impact on operational cost and any overtime that will be incurred because you're going to have to use smaller trucks to do the job of a 20-ton truck? Thank you.
Thank you. The, the biggest concern I have in operational costs do go up with overtime requirements when you're using a smaller truck. Our F-600s have- Our F-600s have a fifth of the capacity, size-wise, not weight-wise. Beyond that, my concern is the responsiveness. When there's an emergency and a roadway goes down, a culvert fails, I need to get equipment out there fast. I need to get materials out there fast. Generally, when bad things like that happen, it doesn't just happen in Northboro. That storm came through and hit everybody. The ice storm comes through and it hits everybody. The flood comes through, it hits everybody. The microbursts that occurred in the North Shore, Northern Mass, they hit everybody. So I can't just call Westboro and say, can I borrow your dump truck? Because everybody needs it. It's the same thing with street sweepers. You know, can we share a street sweeper? I can't. Everybody has to sweep the streets at the same time of the year. DEP mandates it. Same thing with sidewalk plows. We can't share one, I can't borrow one. We all need them at the same time. That's just the nature of responding. And I know, you know, police and fire, emergency responders, you know, they're critical to the residents. Public Works is as well. We keep your roads open, we keep them safe, we allow the kids to get to school, we allow them to walk to school. We get you to our municipal buildings. You know, the continuity of government came completely evidently clear when COVID came around, and the same thing happens on large events. So it's critical, and it gets costly when we don't have the equipment we need.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Millie Milton, 50 Fay Lane. I am under the understanding that when you take a truck out of your fleet, that you get a trade-in for it? And I'm just curious, why doesn't that come off, and where does that trade-in money go?
This is net of the trade-in. The trade-in estimate, and it's a very fluid estimate, was $10,000, because the truck is going to be around for two more years in service. And as I indicated, this one specifically has engine blow-by. That's when you get gases from the compression chamber, leaving the compression chamber, so you're losing power. That's a progressive problem. That's not, oh, I got, you know, I lost one cylinder, I'm going to keep on going. It progressively gets worse. If the engine completely goes, maybe we'll get a couple thousand. I don't know what we're going to get for it. The frame is rotted. This specific truck itself had its body taken off and had the frame rewelded and painted previously. It won't take another one. So I'm not sure what the value is going to be in two years. I'm not...
Thank you.
Thank you, Millie. Any further discussion or debate on Article 22? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $360,000 for the purchase of a 20-ton dump truck with spreader and plow to replace the town's existing 2005 model, which has exceeded its serviceable lifespan due to significant structural deterioration, and funds to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025. This is a simple majority vote. The vote is up. We may vote now. And it looks like the vote is complete. May we see the vote, please? And Article 22 passes by the majority vote. Article 23, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $95,000 for the purchase of a 1-ton pickup truck with plow as a direct replacement for the existing 2012 model to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025.
May I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by our DBW Director.
Thank you. So again, another truck we're here to discuss. Before I do that, I'll talk a little bit about the process we went through with capital planning. We'd estimated this truck at $100,000 previously. We got our estimates in, we got a quote on our trade-in. The price came down to $95,000. We had two capital items on the capital plan this year for $95,000. It was this truck as well as a stump grinder. The stump grinder's engine was suffering from a similar problem as the truck. Lot smaller engine. It's a conventional two-cylinder engine. We were able to repair that engine in-house and pushed off the stump grinder for a few years in order to try to bring the capital dollars for Public Works down this year. Of the three trucks we're discussing, the previous one would not last until replacement. The next one doesn't exist anymore, although it is a replacement. So this one is a direct replacement of one of the two smaller trucks that I mentioned earlier. This is to fund the replacement of a 2012 F-350. The useful life of these trucks is around 12 years. The new vehicle will be the same one as you see behind us. The truck being traded in has bed rail and body rot, and will be nearly 14 years old at the time of replacement. These smaller F-350s perform light snow removal duties, as well as maintenance for our grounds and our parks. One important thing about the single-wheel F-350s is that they don't require a CDL to drive, a commercial driver's license. So we hire seasonal employees in the summer when tasks are busy, when it's, you know, there's a lot of field mowing, weed whacking, blowing, general grounds maintenance. We hire seasonal employees for that. They cannot drive an F-600 dual-wheel vehicle. It requires a CDL when it's pulling a large trailer. This, these F-350s allow them to do that. We have two in our fleet. This is a direct replacement for one of them that is suffering from frame rot. We have a concern that it may not pass inspection either next year or the following before the replacement vehicle comes in.
Thank you. May I hear from appropriations on Article 23, please?
Mr. Moderator, by a majority vote, the Appropriations Committee did not recommend this approval of this article with the preference to extend the vehicle management plan by one year for this vehicle type.
And may I hear from financial planning, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee had a split vote on this, three and three, on Article 23.
Thank you. I believe we go to microphone A, please.
Yes, Doug Stone, 33 Berchow Road. And, you know, I applaud them for getting 20 years out of the larger dump trucks. I believe that's been a policy for many years. And as far as the smaller trucks go, it seems like that primarily the reason for replacement is the rot in the panels. And the question is, could we extend the life of these vehicles by washing them down after storms, possibly, and... You know?
Every snow removal vehicle we have gets washed after every storm. Our maintenance vehicles for the parks and grounds get washed weekly. There is body rot on the front fenders and on the rocker panels. That's less of a concern than the bed rail rot. So the bed rails run along the frame rails on the crossmembers. The crossmembers are rotting as well.
And can they get extra coating? I mean, these are vehicles that are designed for severe service. Can we get extra undercoating for these, or...
You can't undercoat over rust. It doesn't go away.
When it's new, I mean. Can you get extra?
No, no, we purchase long warranties, we get undercoating, we have, they're outfitted appropriately for their service. Again, this truck is 14 years old, so...
I see. And I understand there is some silicone treatment that you can add to reduce the rust even when it's starting?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, and I don't know.
Okay, I could, I could mention it to you sometime. Anyway, thank you.
Mike Shaka, 120 Maynard Street. So I just want to clarify, so the appropriation committee had recommended against this purchase. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And the finance committee were a split vote?
Correct.
Okay. So both committees that have oversight over our financial well-being in this town, one was a no, and one was a split. I'm not going to readjudicate the points that I made earlier. I think everyone has a long enough memory to recognize what I stated, the linear mileage that we have in this town as compared to the amount of trucks. I will repeat, one thing that I said yesterday is, is, boy, do we love fire and brimstone. Boy, wow. It's like, there's, if we don't have that extra truck because we need, you know, instead of four miles, it has to be four and a half miles per truck, then old people will die, children will perish. I mean, this is, we are fire and brimstone all the way, and that's ridiculous. I don't know. Again, I'm going to date myself here. I remember when there were snowstorms and there wasn't a need for immediate gratification, you know? I remember the building was 78, and we actually maybe had to stay inside a little bit longer, just a tiny little bit longer, when there's a storm, because that's just what happens. And I don't know if maybe the 200 people in this room are different from the, you know, 11,000 people in the town, but if I had to weigh a 10% tax increase for a little bit of delayed gratification, a little bit of delayed ability to, maybe I have to sit home. Hey, you know what? Maybe it encourages family time. They get to be with their family a little bit longer, 10 more minutes. I don't know. But the fact that our financial advisors are against and tied on this, the fact that this is not exemplifying the, you know, the example that the chief of police made or the chief of the fire department made, I'm very disappointed with this department, and I vote no. Thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Jacob Ruskowski, 24 School Street. Scott, I know you're in a tough position. It's, the last vehicle, nobody likes that price tag. You kept it for 22 years. I don't want to spend $306,000. I voted yes, because you kept it that long. Same with these vehicles. We live in New England, they deteriorate over time. What I'm unhappy with, and maybe you can explain this to me, is that I can go onto McGovern's commercial website and see F-350s with plows for $53,046, $52,376, $58,334. These are with plows. You're telling me that these are up-charged or up-equipped? What is the up-equipping that's bringing it up 46? I would, I think people would be palatable if we amended this and said, you know, we want to spend $52,376 on a truck and buy it from McGovern, or any of the places in Norwood that are selling the ones with the plows. What is the $40,000, $42,000 difference? Like, what are we getting for that $42,000 that we're not getting for these F-350s that I'm talking about?
Thank you. So we purchase everything off the state bid list, very similar to the fire chief and police chief. The upfitting, when you purchase the chassis, in this case, our quote came from Colonial, Colonial Motor Group. We have purchased from McGovern as well, but this one's from Colonial Motor Group. When you get a chassis, it's a chassis. It's four wheels, frame rails, and a cab, and an engine. There's no back on it. There's nothing. You've got to decide what you're going to have on a back. Some of our trucks, you'll hear, the next vehicle has an asphalt hot box outfitted on it. This one, you got to put a back on it. The current truck that we're trading in has a lift gate on it. That's another rear use. So we have, just amongst some of them, a limited slip differential. That's extra money. All-season radial tires, that's extra money. We need dual batteries on it. That's extra money. LED lights, the boxed-out lights, so they can handle the winter weather. LED hideaway taillights. This one's coming with a toolbox. We have a work light on it, so when we're in the back of it, we can see. There are...
I know it doesn't sound important, but those details to me are important when you're adding that stuff in. Because I come here and I look at these things, I'm trying to do my research, and I'm finding them. You know, they don't define all the differences. I don't know that, you know, we're getting all that extra value out of not doing this. Is it mandated that we have to go through this state procurement system for every vehicle we purchase? Because it seems like they cost a lot more going through the system than having somebody in town research it out and go, like, it seems like we're paying more that way than we're paying, than we would pay for me to walk into McGovern as an independent plow, like, I'm doing it on the side, and purchase one. Like, I can get one for $52,000.
So we can't do that. We would have to get quotes, three quotes. So the reason we go through state bid lists, and almost all municipalities do this, you can purchase the make you want. So our fleet is consistent. The police chief was mentioning earlier, he's transitioning back to Ford. It must be a challenging fleet to manage, because he has Chrysler, Chevy, and Ford all rolling on the road at the same time. If he had his own shop, like we do in Public Works, that would be incredibly difficult for the maintenance staff to maintain three or four different manufacturers. That's one of the benefits of using the state bid list. Another benefit is we do get a discount on a lot of these items. They're generally...
It doesn't seem like the discount is there, though. That's what I'm saying, like, because you're, I'm looking at these, it's basically the same trucks. It's not yellow. That's the only difference. Are we paying for color? Are we paying $40,000 for a yellow truck?
That's actually the least expensive color we have.
It's mind-baffling, and I think that's why you're getting all these pushback.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
So to put in perspective, the chassis alone that I described earlier is $47,205. Everything else is upfitting, and generally, that's not off-base. When you purchase the Mack truck, the chassis is generally in the half range, and the upfitting is about the other half. That's not uncommon.
Microphone B, please.
Mr. Sharpantier, approximately how many miles a year are put on a truck like this?
The mileage varies greatly.
What's the over-under?
I'm going to say it's in the 20K range, but it's about the hours that gets you. I mean, when we're plowing with a vehicle, you know, we're going five miles an hour, but it takes seven hours to plow, and the vehicle is running around in low gear the entire time. It's not commuting and then sitting there, and it's very similar to the police vehicles. You know, I drive my own personal truck. You drive, you park, you go, you park. It sits more than it drives. This thing operates eight hours a day, five days a week, and most Saturday mornings, and then throughout storm events.
So a 14-year-old vehicle could have up to 200,000 miles on it?
It could. It could have, it could have 90,000 miles with three times the hours that a residential vehicle would have.
Thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Thank you. Lori Klein, 209 West Street. First, I would like to thank all of the people who are sitting up here, who have spent so much time and so carefully trying to balance the needs of the town, from financial to safety, to having vehicles that function. You're sitting there so patiently, and I would like to thank most of the audience for being so polite as we listen to our fellow citizens. I'm, I have called the Works Department, and they've come and fixed this, that, and the other thing. Every time I've called them, quickly, if you need a new truck, I'm in support of you having a new truck. But I also think, last night, there were 300 people here. We spent about three hours last night being insulted. You have all been insulted. Tonight is going only a little faster. There are 62 warrant articles. It is very frustrating for many members of this audience to sit here and be insulted with every single article that comes up, and I would ask that it stop. We all have agendas. We are all here to try to help the town. Give us the dignity of being here to do the best we can for the town. Stop calling us names and insulting our intelligence and insulting our fine-town workers and volunteers. Thank you.
Microphone B, please.
Hi, Tim Kalin, 42 Davis Street. I've been involved in local government here in town for eight to 10 years now, and I've had the pleasure of working with Scott going through this process many times now. And I just wanted to come up and let, it's been implied that Scott isn't as fiscally responsible as other department heads and that he is a little bit more aggressive in his spending, and that is the furthest thing from the truth. And that is the furthest thing from the truth. Scott does an excellent job of managing department resources and budgets. When he asks for things, it is for the good of the community. You may disagree or agree with the ask, but it is not because he is asking for frivolous things or being fiscally irresponsible. Scott is a good man, and he works very hard for this community. I don't know if anybody here realizes how hard this man works. Thank you.
One last one.
I'll make this quick. Kathy DeGraff, twenty-three Edmonds Way. Uh, I was recently in my hometown in the mid-Atlantic. Uh, we had a terrible snowstorm in January or February, and we were snowed in, because they don't pull out the streets like they did when I was a kid. And when I got home to Northborough, I was so relieved, because I, I knew I'd be able to get in and out of my driveway. I wouldn't be stuck in a house with a foot and a half of snow on the ground for three days. It is not a small thing to wait around until the one truck in town has time to come and plow your road. Our roads are very well-managed here, and I so appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, it's time to, uh, have a vote on Article twenty-three. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of ninety-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a one-ton pickup truck with plow as a direct replacement for the existing twenty-twelve model, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY twenty-twenty-five. This is a majority vote, and the voting has started. And it looks like the voting is complete. And Article twenty-three passes by the majority vote required. Article twenty-four, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred sixty thousand dollars for the purchase of a new asphalt hotbox, to be mounted onto an existing twenty-sixteen chassis, and for the purchase of a replacement F-six-hundred dump body with plow, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY twenty-twenty-five.
The motion has been made and seconded. Again, we have our DPW director. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the kind words, everyone. That's wonderful. Um, so I mentioned earlier about, uh, a truck that's no longer in our fleet. This is the one we're talking about. This request replaces a two thousand twelve mid-sized chassis truck with a frame-mounted asphalt box. Uh, this truck supports, uh, year-long roadway repairs. Uh, in the winter, it trucks our, our coal patch and keeps it warm. An asphalt hotbox is a, a diesel-fired box that sits on the back of a truck. Um, it's got a chute on it. It's, again, got a, a, a burner in it, an auger. Um, coal patch in a lot of communities sits in a, a pile inside the garage. Garages are generally fifty-five, fifty degrees. Uh, our hotbox, uh, keeps the coal patch hot, pliable, and available for use, uh, throughout the wintertime. Uh, speeds up our response to pothole concerns, uh, very quickly. Um, when it's hot-mix season, the hot asphalt, uh, is purchased and put into the hotbox, and every single, uh, pound of it is used. Um, that's because it keeps it hot from the plant all the way to the job site, and our job site is not often a site, it's often plural. So, in the, in the spring, when the plants open up, we're driving all around town and doing permanent patches on, on the potholes. We currently do not have, um, a hotbox. Um, the, um, engine blew in the, in the chassis, in the two thousand twelve chassis. And when we went to sell the, the chassis with the hotbox, we had a few contractors come by to look at it, to see what kind of pricing we, we think we would get. None of them wanted it. We looked into the hotbox a little further. The burner needed to be replaced, and the frame was, was deteriorating. Um, the trade-in value on that truck was nominal, uh, which we used, uh, to offset some costs on a, on a, on a purchase from last year. Currently, when we purchase hot, hot, uh, hot-mix asphalt with the dump truck you saw earlier, we purchase about twice as much as we need, unfortunately. When we get to the, to the plant, we get four tons of asphalt, they put it in the truck. By the time we get to the three or four locations in town that we need to use the hot mix on, half of it has cooled off. That half cooling is there solely to keep the other half fresh. Then we can go back to the plant, dump what's cooled off, we pay to dump it, and then we buy some more and bring it back. Having a hotbox is probably one of the most critical, uh, pieces of equipment in the fleet that the residents see when it comes to, um, failed trenches and, and potholes. Um, it's much more time-consuming and costly right now with the operations we have. So, the request is to purchase, uh, a brand-new hotbox, mount it on an old chassis, a two thousand sixteen chassis, and buy a new chassis with a dump body. We have a two thousand sixteen chassis that has a dump body on it now. Take that dump body off, put the hotbox on it. What we don't want to do is put a hotbox on a brand-new chassis. Driving around with an asphalt hotbox is a messy job. The, it's very unpleasant for the chassis. They, they, asphalt, paving potholes is not a clean job. Um, so this is all part of our repurposing. When we get a brand-new vehicle, we put that at the front of the fleet. As the vehicles get older, we'll repurpose them to less pleasant services, let's say, such as trash collection or, or roadway paving. Um, so again, this is to replace, a direct replacement for a vehicle that, um, that is no longer in the fleet. Thank you. Uh, may I hear from appropriations on Article twenty-four, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted in the majority to recommend approval of Article twenty-four.
Thank you. And may I hear from Financial Planning, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee, by a majority, voted, uh, yes to recommend this Article twenty-four.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on Article twenty-four? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred sixty thousand dollars for the purchase of a new asphalt, asphalt hotbox, to be mounted onto an existing two thousand sixteen chassis, and for the purchase of a replacement F-six-hundred dump body with plow, to be transferred from the free cash to be available for expenditure in FY twenty-twenty-five. This is a majority vote. The voting is open. It looks like the voting is complete. And Article twenty-four passes by the majority required vote. Article twenty-five, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for engineering services related to the Assabett Hill Drainage and Roadway Improvement Project, to be transferred from free, free cash, to be available for expenditure in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
Motion's been made and seconded. Our DPW director. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the, the drainage in the Assabett Hill neighborhood is not the only issue up there. Um, there's been a lot of problems, uh, when it comes to roadway settlement, sidewalk issues. One of our sidewalk machines, when we, uh, do street sweeping, we'll run a sidewalk machine with a sweeper on it to sweep off the sidewalks, so they're, get cleaned at the same time. Uh, that sank through the sidewalk. Um, when we, when I went up there to look at it, um, peeled some of the pavement back, and what's supposed to be eight inches of compacted gravel burrow under a sidewalk was more like the consistency of pudding. Um, that subdivision suffers from some problems during construction, and one of them is certainly the drainage. This request is to fund engineering services associated with repair of the drainage roadways and sidewalks, uh, in this neighborhood. The drainage in this neighborhood was found to have numerous localized failures that resulted in several large sinkholes. These also impacted the sidewalks and pavement conditions. The engineering work will prepare, uh, plans, specifications, and a construction cost estimate, so I can come back and request some future construction funding. In two thousand nineteen, we had three large sinkholes open up, um, on, uh, Assabett, Assabett Hill, Liberty Drive. Um, these were large, these were Volkswagen-sized sinkholes. Um, the, it was obviously drainage, that was the problem. There's no sewer up there. It's, it's, uh, it's water only. So, um, that's, I'm sorry, it's sewer only. We, we videoed the, the sewers, they were in good shape. We videoed all the drains. Um, there's systemic drainage pipe failures in the neighborhood. Uh, the vast majority of them look like it's from poor construction methods. Uh, the bells on the pipes had broken. Um, you got a bell and a spigot. Spigot goes inside the bell. When it's not well-compacted around that, that joint settles, the bell breaks, and then the road material starts, uh, draining into the pipe, washing out the pipe, and then all of a sudden, we have a sinkhole. Um, we video-inspected every single drain line. We found systemic problems throughout the neighborhood. Had an engineer come up with a, a plan on how to address this without doing the entire neighborhood. Um, we had a report developed in early twenty-twenty that identified every single defect. Um, this request is to have those, those video defects designed for replacement and repair, and the roadways and sidewalks to, um, to get designed and ready for, for construction bidding. Thank you. Thank you. May I hear from appropriations on Article twenty-five, please?
Mr. Moderator, Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article twenty-five.
And from Financial, Financial Planning, please.
Mr. Moderator, Financial Planning also voted unanimously to approve, to recommend approval of this Article twenty-five.
Thank you. And, uh, microphone A, please.
Yes, Doug Stone, thirty-three Bretcher Road. And I don't doubt that that neighborhood needs work. I was up there last weekend. Um, it seems like you've done extensive work. You've mentioned with videoing and engineering consulting already, which is great. It just seems like maybe, uh, I'm just wondering why you don't essentially have the order now for the materials that you need and just do it, rather than what engineering. It seems unusual for a neighborhood to acquire this extra engineering, when, when, when you've had a lot of it done already.
We haven't done a lot of it. Um, the defects are, are extensive. We have a, a report of them all. We can't just go out and, and, and purchase materials, uh, pipelines. So, there's about twelve hundred feet of pipe that, uh, that needs replacement or repair. One of the methods for repairing a pipe is cure-and-place pipe. I had mentioned that earlier about the culverts that failed on Howard Street and Church Street. Um, I guess a good analogy is you take a tube sock, you dip it in some fiberglass, you put it in the pipe, you blow it up, and when it cures, you drill the ends out. Now, you got a new pipe inside of a pipe. That's kind of a simplified version of it. That could be a solution in this neighborhood that would save us some money, so we don't have to dig. Um, that's not something the town does. Um, we don't have the resources to go out and replace twelve hundred linear feet of pipe, because we wouldn't be able to do our day job. Um, this needs to be bid out for a construction contractor to come in and do the work. There's absolutely no, um, good reasoning to reconstruct the roadways, which are in terrible condition, until the underlying drainage problems have been addressed. Um, so the proper process is to get a, a good design that's cost-effective, put it out on the street for bids, and have a general contractor come in here and perform the work.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone B, please.
Sorry, I'm nervous. Diane Reynolds, twelve Village Drive. What was the year this Assabett subdivision was done?
It was built in the, uh, mid-nineties, right before the, the, the bubble blew or whatever, and when the, when they were building left and right, you know, so...
Okay. I didn't remember the year, but I was on the committee that was voted against taking that Assabett Hill, the only green area we had downtown.
Thank you.
Well, we tried, and we lost. So, now, is there any, um, any way we can get money back from the poor subdivision construction, whoever, whoever built that facility?
No, there's no, no bonds retained. The roadways were accepted at town meeting. Um, you know, the, the ship has sailed. Um, it's our roads, and it's...
So, it's our town responsibility now?
It's the right thing to fix for the neighborhood and the community.
You should've listened to us. Thank you for all your help.
Microphone A, please.
Norm Corbin, thirty-five Whitney Street. Um, obviously, it was shady construction, because it should've lasted a lot longer. How, are we protecting ourselves from this kind of work today that we didn't twenty years ago?
Uh, well, one, um, we don't see subdivisions like that going in very often in Northborough. Since I've been here, we've had two, Sterling Court and Harrington Way. Um, and we do perform, uh, substantial construction inspections during those builds. Um, the, the inspections on those two roadways can be done by staff, because they're small cul-de-sacs. You know, there's four houses on one of them, three on the other. Um, if a subdivision like this was to come in on one of our large tracks, um, the, the Planning Director does have a process, um, to bring in a, a consultant who works for the town to inspect the construction so that everybody here knows that a professional engineer and, and construction inspector has observed the work, and tells us that it is done right before the, uh, the voting body accepts the roadway.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome. Is there any, any other discussion or debate on Article twenty-five? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for engineering services related to the Assabett Hill Drainage and Roadway Improvement Project, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY two thousand twenty-five. This is a majority vote. The voting is open. And it looks like the voting is complete. Article twenty-five passes by the majority vote required. Article twenty-six, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the total sum of ninety-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a one-ton pickup truck with plow as a direct replacement for the existing twenty-fifteen model with fifty-seven thousand dollars to be appropriated from the Water Enterprise Fund free cash, and thirty-eight thousand dollars to be appropriated from the Sewer Enterprise free cash to be available for expenditure in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
Motion has been made and seconded. Thank you. Our DPW director. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, this article and the next article are, um, two articles that are, um, funded completely out of the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds, if you were here last night, uh, you'll understand what they are. If you weren't, uh, the Water Enterprise Fund is, uh, one hundred percent supported by, uh, the water users of, of Northborough. So, there is no tax impacts on these. Um, the Sewer Enterprise Fund is operated in the same fashion. There is no tax subsidy for sewer nor water. Um, this vehicle is a, a twin of the, uh, pickup truck we, we talked about earlier, except it's for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. General fund vehicles don't get used by the Water Enterprise Fund and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and vice versa. It's important that, um, the, the ratepayers for waters and sewers understand that what they purchase is used for, um, the services that they're provided for water and sewer. That's why these are, are, are separate and, and quite a bit different. Um, so, but the, the F-350 we're talking about here is, is very similar to, in the, in the condition as, as the other one. It's suffering from, uh, body rot as well as, uh, bed rail rot. We actually did pull the bed off this one and had the frame, um, cleaned and painted and put a new bed on it. Um, that since has corroded again. Um, so, we're here to, to request replacement of it. Um, this truck sees, uh, emergency responses to the sewer stations, performs snow removal at the sewer stations, and does, uh, daily duties of the Water and Sewer Division. Again, it'll be funded, um, from Enterprise Fund retained balance, which is a similar entity as a free cash. Thank you. May I hear from the, is there anyone here from the Water and Sewer Commission?
Sir.
Right there? Your guidance on this one?
Mr. Moderator, good evening. Uh, John Mead...
John Meter, Cedar Hill Road, Chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission. Commission is unanimously in support of this article and asks for the town's approval. Thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from the Appropriations Committee, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 26.
And the Financial Planning Committee, please.
Mr. Moderator, financial planning recommends, by a majority vote, approval of this Article 26.
Thank you. And I believe we have some discussion on microphone B.
Michael Chaka, 120 Main Street. So, again, similar to free cash, there's no such thing as a free lunch. So just because it's coming out of the water and sewer, that's still money. Money is money, no matter where it's coming from. And again, I, again, I'm not going to re-adjudicate the points earlier. There's, the fleet is too large, and at a time that we have a 10% increase in the tax burden to these people, this is unfair. I do have a question for you, though. So, does that bed have a liner? Is there a bed liner on there? It looks like there's a bed liner in the picture to the right, but to the left, it doesn't look like it has a bed liner.
There is a bed liner. The other photograph is actually the bed rail and the frame rail.
Oh, that's the frame rail. So you had a bed liner, and the bed rotted?
I'm sorry, it's a spray-in liner. It's not like a plastic liner that you would see in a...
Yeah, so, but you went through two beds in 10 years?
Well, I didn't indicate that the new bed is rotted. I indicated that the frame and the bed rail is deteriorated.
Okay.
Such that it would not accept another bed.
Okay. So, just, you know, my limited knowledge of trucks, a plastic bed liner would have prevented that. Is that, would you agree with that?
No, plastic bed liners are actually worse for the condition of a truck bed than a spray-in liner. My personal truck I purchased had a plastic bed liner, it was a nightmare. The water gets underneath the plastic, between the plastic and the metal, and the metal rots, and then you don't even see it until you pull your bed liner out, or it blows out on the highway, and then you realize you need a new bed. These are all spray-in liners.
Yeah, boy, that's just not been my experience, but either, neither here nor there. The point is, is that, again, for the reasons previously stated, I think that the fleet's too large, and I think that at this time, we need to be fiscally fair to the taxpayers of the town of Northborough.
Any other discussion or debate? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on for Article 26. I move the town vote to appropriate the total sum of $95,000 for the purchase of a one-ton pickup truck with plow as a direct replacement for the existing 2015 model, with $57,000 to be appropriated from the Water Enterprise Fund free cash, and $38,000 to be appropriated from Sewer Enterprise free cash, to be available for expenditure in FY 2025. This is a majority vote, and the votes, the vote is open. And it looks like the voting is complete. And Article 26 passes by the required majority vote. Article 27.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $650,000 for the repair and or replacement of Water Main Bridge supports, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet said appropriation, authorize the borrowing of said funds under the Water Enterprise Fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 8, or any other enabling authority.
The motion has been made and seconded. Our DPW Director.
Finally. Here we are, the last capital item for Public Works. So Public Works is critical to the community's needs. Probably one of the most important things is safe and reliable drinking water. That's what this article is about. This is to fund the replacement of two utility bridges that carry our drinking water. The first is where Oda Street crosses Hop Brook, and the second is School Street where it crosses over the Asabet River. Both bridges were, both utility bridges were found to be in poor to failing condition. The loss of either one would result in numerous water customers being without drinking water. The Asabet River crossing on School Street is over by the golf course. It's the sole source of water for the Juniper Hill, Juniper Brook neighborhood. That entire circle development has one water source coming in. It runs over that bridge. That bridge you see is to the right. Those bridge supports are failing. There's full rot all the way through. In the event that fails, that entire neighborhood will be without safe drinking water. The same condition, the same circumstances occur on Oda Street at Hop Brook, that's at that sharp curve by Bavarian Farm. That's the other photograph. You'll see that beam, and you can see right through it. That's full web deterioration. In the event that bridge was to fail, Walmart, Lawrence Street, and the rest of Oda Street would be without drinking water. These two are critical components of infrastructure. We've currently engaged an engineer under our emergency reserves to design this, so that this request cannot be for design, it could be directly for construction. These are imminent needs. The design services are substantially complete. We've gone through the permitting process through the Conservation Commission. The request before you for $650,000 is based on a construction cost estimate developed by those engineers, and this will be 100% funded by the Water Enterprise Fund, and it is a borrowing request.
Thank you, thank you. May I hear from the Water and Sewer Commission?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Moderator, John Meter, Cedar Hill Road, Chairman of Water Sewer Commission. Shouldn't be any surprise, the commission is unanimous in support of this article and requests the town approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And may I hear from the Appropriations Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 27.
And the Financial Planning Committee, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 27.
Thank you. I didn't see who came up, so I'm gonna go with, well, you both came at the same time, right? We'll go with A.
Mr. Moderator, Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. I don't doubt that these fixes need to be made, and I support making these fixes. I doubt the estimate of $650,000 that some professionals gave us in recent history. I remember an estimate of $540,000 for a police station reciting that I made a motion to amend last year for $270,000, and the project, if I was following all the meetings correctly, was actually done for more like $200,000. Good job on all that, by the way, but my point was, is when 540 was requested just like this, it wasn't what it ended up costing. Now, I'd be happy to just approve this and hope that your bids come in low, and you can do it for much cheaper, and maybe that's just the way to go, but I really don't like that process. I'm just saying. It seems to me, $650,000 sounds like a lot of money to replace some metal brackets. I'm not an expert, of course, but I'll be supporting this. I'm not going to move for an amendment. I understand everyone gets frustrated with that, but I really hope we could do this for a lot cheaper than $650,000. Thank you.
Just to respond, I agree. I hope it comes in far less than that. The issue with the School Street Bridge, and anybody who drives over that bridge knows that that sidewalk is closed. That sidewalk was, we were directed by Mass DOT to close the sidewalk due to the failing supports. The failing supports are what you see, and also support the Water Main. We are not allowed to touch that sidewalk or those supports without bringing the entire bridge up to current compliance. There is no funds available under the general fund or in the capital plan to replace this bridge, where the structure of the bridge that conveys vehicular traffic is in decent shape. It's just the utility bridge. Mass DOT, and I asked them, will not allow us to remove the pipe underneath without replacing the sidewalk and bringing the bridge up to code. So we're actually building a new bridge for the utilities on the opposite side. That's why this is far more expensive than I wish it was. Just like our other capital items with free cash and the enterprise fund balance, if it doesn't get spent on the project, it goes back in, and I hope and pray that this does, because it's a big number.
Microphone B, please.
Eric Martin, 32 Weston Terrace. Part of my question was already answered, so thank you very much. Also, you explicitly call out that there's no redundancy for either main. Is there redundancy for other mains here? Mr. Sharpton, here, I have a personal stake here. As you know, I live on Weston Terrace, so I'm pretty sure I'm in this boat.
You are.
I thought so.
Any neighborhood that you get into and get out of in the same direction...
Yep.
...generally does not have redundancy. There are some exceptions where we have cross-country easements. Cross-country easements and water mains don't get along very well. It's very easy to not track down a leak when you've got a water main running through a swamp, so we try to keep water mains on the roadways. But nope, you are in that boat, but you don't have a bridge, so...
But, right, so there's no reason to do any sort of redundancy. It's just if it, when it, hopefully it doesn't fail, and we fix it when it fails.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Also, microphone B, please.
John Rappo, 105 Weston Terrace. Scott, if the School Street Bridge fails tonight, what do your people do? And what happens to the 30 houses that rely on water coming across that pipe?
We would have to...
Sixty, thank you, stand. Stand, correct it. Sixty houses.
We would run a temporary line from a hydrant to a hydrant until we can procure and purchase more robust permanent piping, but not permanent. The temporary line would be plastic. It would likely be a two-inch line. That's a lot of people to serve with a small two-inch line. It would take likely a week or so to get a six-inch main going across the roadway. We'd probably have to close one of the lanes of the road, put up traffic lights, automated traffic lights for bi-directional, single-lane traffic. They did that on Lake Street in West, over by the hospital, when that embankment fell. They did it for like three years. So that's likely the case.
So, fair to say, this fails, you come to action, you're going to have no water, then reduce pressure, then eventually a Band-Aid to fix it.
That is correct, and that'll be a long-lasting Band-Aid, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Gib Chase at Juniper Development. John and Scott, you might miss your chance, you know, if that bridge goes, you wouldn't have the enjoyment and benefit of me being here with you tonight or coming to these meetings, you know. That was an old bridge years ago that was built into the Kimball Farm down there, where the Juniper Brook development was built back in '70s. And one way in, no way out. We're butted up to the old state hospital land, which is now the Mass Wildlife Refuge, Wildlife Refuge Area, which pretty much surrounds that, and then you have the Asabet River going down through. The old stone bridge there has required a lot of maintenance, as a lot of the old man-made bridges do now, especially with the high waters. We've had little sinkholes in there and washouts going on. We've been lucky that the whole bridge hasn't gone, and when they built that, no, I guess there were no considerations or restrictions, of course, on your access, one way in, one way out. If the bridge goes, there's 60 homes in there that would be stranded. We also have a natural gas line coming in there.
You can see it on the photograph, it's orange.
We have potential for a lot of fun there, and I appreciate you getting this on the list for repairs. I appreciate it. Are you, with the contracts going out, are you obligated again now for the wages that the Mass law requires?
Yes, yes, we are.
I know, in the previous thing, it wasn't explained, but a lot of you people know, a lot of you don't. We, we don't have a choice. A lot of times when we go off a contract for town work, we're obligated to go with these prevailing wages contracts, and it hurts. You cannot hire outside of this. The only alternative is to have volunteers do it, or you have DPW do it. So, the cost for these type of things hurt both the community and the taxpayer. It doesn't help, anyway, and that's what we're up against. So I thank you for getting this on the list, and I appreciate all the work you do. Thanks.
You're welcome, Mr. Chase. Okay, we're on Article 27. Are you coming?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
With permission, I'd like to make a procedural motion for the balance of the annual meeting this year, that we depart from our procedures such that the moderator doesn't have to read the entire motion every time. If we could do a hand vote for that, maybe, that would be my proposal.
What does the body think about that? Those in favor of my not reading? Those opposed? My throat thanks you from the bottom of its heart. Article 27, once again, we know what the motion is. And I believe voting is complete, and Article 27 passes by the required two-thirds vote. Thank you for your support and engagement this evening. Please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $53,690 from the PEG Access Cable Related Fund for the purchase and installation of a replacement hypercaster broadcast server for the Northborough Cable Access Television NCAT to be available for expenditure in fiscal year 2025.
Motion has been made and seconded. Our presenter is Dana Volk, Northborough Cable Access Director.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dana Volk, I'm the Director of Northborough Cable. We are the town's municipal community media department. Just a little bit about us, because we're sort of the underdogs, behind-the-scenes folks around here. We cover live municipal meetings for the town, we cover town events, we create video content for the town, and we offer AV assistance for all town departments and schools. And the way that we are funded is through 5% of residential cable subscription revenue in the town. And we can be found on our three P-E and G, public education and government channels on Verizon and Charter Cable. We're also available online on YouTube, Facebook, and the town's website, 24/7. You can watch us anytime, even if you don't subscribe to cable. So tonight, I'm asking about the replacement of our aging Telview Hypercaster, and this is a portion of our rack that's in our office, and that would be this little fellow right here. That little guy. So, that guy has been running 24/7, 365 since February of 2017, and we use that to schedule all of our three channels, our PEG channels, that's up 24/7, 365. We use a web-based interface to manage all of our on-demand media and streaming all of our channels to Verizon and Charter. It outputs and inputs different IP streams online, again, to YouTube, Facebook, and et cetera, all kinds of other IP live streams, and we get those from other places as well. It runs our community bulletin board, our tickers, and crawls, and digital signage, and we have an archive integrated with a cloud server. And the initial cost to do this back then cost... And the initial cost to do this back then cost $114,000 and change, and it's coming to its end of life at the very beginning of 2027, and we pay just shy of $12,000 in a service plan with Telview to service all of our, all of our broadcast equipment. And for anybody who has been in the IT technology realm, you know that server that runs like this after 10 years, that's pretty much it. And once it hits end of life, the, my vendor, Telview, will no longer fix it, replace it. That's it. So if this thing decides to kick the bucket, we are, we're off the air, which is no good for us. This is basically the heart of our operation of what we do. So we're looking to replace it with its direct, pretty much its direct replacement. So just to clarify on, on your paperwork, so the title of this is, it's the replacement of the B-1000. We're just replacing it with the B-2000. It's pretty much the same thing, does the same thing. It just has a few more inputs and outputs, but it's basically the, the same thing, does the exact same job for us. This will last us until 2037, and the funding source for this is, comes from our, our 5% of cable revenue that we get from your cable subscription. So there is no tax impact from this. Yeah, I know, three, your three favorite words tonight together, so, yeah, so I'm looking for your support to, and your blessing to, to get this going, so, thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from Appropriations on Article 28, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 28.
And may I hear from Financial Planning, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee also voted unanimously to recommend approval of this Article 28.
Any discussion? Any debate? Hearing none. We are voting on Article 28. I will not read it, and the information's up there. The vote is open. And I believe the vote is complete. The cable access will continue.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Want to use that mic?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at this late hour, just because the next article should have substantial debate. I think it's best to...
There is a second? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. The motion was to adjourn and, you know, begin tomorrow evening. We're almost like family, and go from there. I'll, I'll give Dave a chance just to get that on the screen.
Jacob Jones, 106 Greensheet. I don't know if this is a debatable motion or not, but I would actually ask if the gentleman would amend his motion to simply skip this one for tomorrow and use the next eight minutes to do number 30. Save time. Number 30 should be fast, I'm thinking.
We're, we have to vote on this motion, anyway.
But if you don't want to, I understand. Just throwing it out there.
No, thanks. We'll vote.
And it looks like the voting has stopped. Whoops, there it goes again. The motion to adjourn passes by the majority vote. I will see everyone tomorrow evening at 5:57 PM.